Post the recording. So Trish, if you are ready to roll, let's start again. We will turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. So we have four policies on the agenda. I'll go through the updates of each of the policies I've recommended by the Policy Advisory Committee and our stakeholders. And then Trustee Craig Whitehead will, who is the Chair of our Policy Advisory Committee, will then make a motion for amendment. So our first policy is Policy 400.1. Welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe work environments. We added in the first paragraph, "and inclusion." Down to Regulations 2, we deleted "by phone, fax, email, internet," or "intranet," or an added "hard copy," "digital communication," or... We also deleted the last sentence of that Regulation number 2 because it's already covered within that regulation, including behaviors such as cyber hate messaging and websites created in the employee's home, in cyber cafes, or other settings. To Regulation number 3, we deleted "to the correct authority," all, and added at the end of Regulation number 3, according to Policy 402.8.1, harassment, discrimination, and violence prevention in the workplace. Down to References, we replaced Education Act, or replaced the School Act with Education Act, and updated the sections, and also added 402.8.1, harassment, discrimination, and violence prevention in the workplace. Are there any questions at all with this policy?
Tyler.
Try a friendly amendment. Let's see. And the Regulations 2.
Yep.
Prefer physical copy to hard copy.
What is the real wording? Do we call them physical copies, or do we call them hard copies?
Normally, in my mind, it's a physical copy of something. Hard copy. So I know I'm old, but hard copy is also a tabloid TV show from my past. So I prefer physical copy. And I think, I don't know. In a hard form, it might just be some type of physical copy. So I would go physical, but that's...
Anybody, anyone else want to add in there?
I'm not seeing anyone going either way, so go ahead, Craig.
I have no problem with that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? Christine, go ahead.
So just with that friendly amendment, I just looked up, "hard copy," is a hard copy occupies real physical space. Soft copies do not occupy real physical space. So that would be the definition of a hard copy. I don't know if that means anything, but just look that up.
Thank you.
I have no problem, because physical means something that's hard, that you can grasp and hold on to. So, yeah.
Were you making a motion for that one, or are you going to go through them all?
No.
We want to motion out each one?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we accept Policy 400.1 as amended.
Perfect, thank you. And those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
Okay. Next policy, 401.3, non-union employees. In Regulations 2 and 6, deleted there, or deleted his/her and added there. And in Regulations 8, we deleted "normally" and "annually," and added, nope, "normally" and "annually," deleted those words. And Regulations number 9, added, unless otherwise authorized by the direct supervisor. Updated School Act to Education Act and the sections, and updated District to Division for the references. Any questions for this policy?
Christina, go ahead.
I'm just curious why annually was removed, and if there's a need to put in a timeframe, or is that already regulated elsewhere?
I'm not, actually, salary goods and compensation packages shall be reviewed by the Board Non-Union Staff Committee. I don't think it's practice to do this annually, or to add the word "normally," and then "annually."
And I think Cheryl's agreeing with that as well.
Yes.
And I could respond to that, because that's certainly not been practiced, right? So if we take a look at the trend of negotiated agreements over the past, is it four years? Three or four years?
Yeah.
Because typically, the non-union review of annual salaries and compensation follows the, after there's been ATA and QPIT conversations and review. And so to say annually and normally isn't accurate, right? And so really, that committee, that board committee, sort of makes that committee chair, and that committee makes that, now would be an appropriate time for that review, which would more accurately represent what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Hey, I move that Policy 401.3, non-union employees, be accepted as amended.
Andrea's? No questions? Those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Go ahead, Trish, with the next.
Okay, Policy 404.5, secondments and exchanges. Just updating District to Division, and updating in the references, School Act to Education Act, and updating the section as well. Any questions or comments?
Okay, I move that Policy 404.5 be adopted as amended.
And those in favor? And I can't see Christine. You're good. Thank you. That's carried. One more, Trish?
Yep, one more policy, 806.1, Enterprise Risk Management. This policy's had its first reading at the December 14th Board Meeting. This is a new policy, and so we are just, there has been no feedback from stakeholders for this one since then. So looking for a second reading, and possibly a final reading for this policy.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yes, before I put it up, if it's unanimous on the second reading, and because we have had no further feedback, we can then say a third, we can then do it a third time. I move that we pass Policy 806.1, Enterprise Risk Management, for the second time.
Thank you. Those in favor? Go ahead, Craig.
I move that Policy 806.1, Enterprise Risk Management, be passed a third time.
Those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, and thank you, Trish, for your time, for your work. Perfect. And next, we have the First Quarter Financial Report, and we have a couple of guests with us today, and Christine would like to introduce them.
Sure, thank you very much. First of all, you'll see the gentleman, of course, sitting at the back. He's observing the operation, Mark DeBoer. And Mark, his last day here is on Friday, and he's leaving to return back to Vulcan County. And so we wish him well, and, you know, summer knows Adam and say, whatever. But thank you very much. I'm just still a little bitter, but thank you. Thank you very much, Mark. We do appreciate everything you've done, and we do wish you well in your new position. And we also, I'd like to thank him. He's been, Avis DeKalver, who I'm going to introduce you as the new Director of Finance, started on January 17th. Of course, you've seen her in her role as our auditor, and so we're well happy to have her aboard, and we also want to thank Mark, who's been showing her all the ropes for the last two weeks, and imparting all his knowledge. And so I'm sure Avis's head is quite full of all kinds of thoughts to learn, but Mark has been a great teacher. So, yeah, and so, welcome, Avis. Thank you, Mark. And Avis, I'm going to turn the show over to you.
Perfect, thank you, Christine. And I just want to double check, everyone can see my screen, and you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. That is great. All right, so I'm pleased to present the 2021, 2022 First Quarter Report for ending November 30th, 2021. So the following is just an overview of the quarterly reporting. This is supplement to the actual quarterly report, which provides more additional details that you can find on the website. And so we will just jump right in. So these reports are based on the operating budget, and is based on the updated approved September 30th budget, as it more accurately represents the operations of the division. We have updated the operating budget for the estimated effects on the school-generated funds from COVID-19, as many of the significant SGF activities are unlikely to be provided this year. So this should give a more realistic perspective on the operating budget compared to simply just saying it's less than budget due to COVID-19. So as you can see there, it's about 2.3 million decrease in SGF revenues and expenses. So the budget charts, I know some of you have seen these, and some of them, they may be new to you. So you can see here, so the budget charts that will be throughout the presentation, the budget will be blue, forecast will be green, and then the actual will be red. Similar with this one, budget will be blue, forecast will be green, year-to-date will be red. Then there's also going to be these checkmarks throughout the presentation as well. So in this one, that we're going to have green and yellow, so the green is within forecasted costs, and the yellow is monitoring costs increases, but they are still within budget. All right, so let's... First, we'll start with revenues. So as you can see, as of November 30th, we've received 26% of total revenues. So that overall is forecasted to be 101% of the forecasted of the revenues received. You can see here that the largest variance relates to Alberta education funding, which is just based on the timing of grants. As well with other sales and services, they're less than forecast in relation to the recognition of international tuition, as it still has to be transferred from last year's prepaid based on the students and services being provided, and this will happen in the second quarter. But then the majority are comparable to forecasts. And next, we will go to expenditures. So as you can see, total expenditures are 26% spent as at November 30th, and it's overall comparable to the forecast of 96% within forecast. So as shown in the charts, you can see that we will go through both by program and by type, and so we'll go through a breakdown of each of those. So we'll first start with pre-K. So this reporting includes early education and PUFF for pre-K students. Pre-K right now is at 25% of its total budget, which is at 85% of forecasted costs. Majority of savings relate to the timing of when staff are being hired, so overall considered in line with budget. Next, we'll go to instruction for kindergarten to grade 12, which is at 25% spent, which is, and then is at 96% of forecasted costs. Again, majority of these savings are just the timing of when staff has been hired. And there are also some state savings on school-based budgets, specifically with contingency accounts, and those haven't been utilized as at November 30th. So overall, considered in line with budget. Next, we'll go to operations and maintenance, which is at 31.3% of total budget, 96% of the forecasted costs. Insurance costs have been a little less than projected, however, these may increase next reporting year as the insurance premiums have increased. So overall, considered in line with budget. Transportation is at 29.9% spent, which is at about 101% of the forecasted costs, and these costs are slightly higher than the forecast, which is due to an increase in fuel costs, however, they are still within budget. As you can see with the yellow checkmark, it's still within budget, just a little bit higher than the forecasted. Next, we'll go to system administration, which is at 28.5% spent of total budget. This is within, this is at 93% of forecasted costs, considered in line. And last, external services, which is the international program, 25% spent, which is at 103% of the forecast. And this slight increase is just due to payments at the beginning of the year, which happened for the international students, but it is just a slight, a slight increase over forecast. So those are the departments. Now, next, we'll go to the types. So first, we'll start with salaries, benefits, and professional development. So this, you can see here, is at 25% of budget. It's less than forecasted. This is due to the average teacher cost being less than budget, as well as the timing of benefits. So that's your CPP and your EI. We're going to restart in January of 2022, but overall, considered in line with budget. Next, we'll go to contracted services. So these are your audit, your legal, your consulting, utilities, transport, maintenance, safety, and wellness. 31.5% spent, which is less than forecast due to utilities and other contracted services being less than forecasted. So overall, considered in line with budget. Next, we'll go to other services, which is insurance, international programs, memberships, printing rentals, and advertising. This is at 66% of budget, is less than forecasted due to rentals and insurance being less than expected. Overall, considered in line with budget. Supplies, this is your general supplies, your technology, your maintenance, and your small equipment. 21.9% spent, which is less than forecasted due to the timing of supplies and equipment purchases to still be made, but overall, considered in line with budget. Other expenditures, so this is your contingency, your travel, your car allowances, and renovations. This is at 10.9% spent, which is less than forecasted, mainly due to the contingency accounts not having to be used yet, and then considered in line with budget. And then last but not least, you have your transfers, your school-generated funds, and your capital at IMR costs, which are at 27.6% spent, less than forecasted, due to SGF operating costs still to be incurred, and then that's been offset by an increase in IMR costs, just to do the, just to the timing of the projects being done. But overall, it's considered in line with budget. So next, we will go over here and just take a look at the projections for the end of the year. So as you can see with the revenues, we are in line to match the budget at the end of the year, and then we are currently under budget due to this instruction here, as you can see, which has been previously discussed, with the average teaching costs and the carry forward contingencies that haven't been used yet. So next, we'll go to the financial position as at November 30th. The net financial assets are at 17.22 million as at November 30th compared to 17.46 million in the prior year. The majority of this relates to the weighted moving average liability with the reduced student enrollment. And then lastly, you can see that there, on the website, is the full quarterly report, as well as the up-to-date dashboards are on the website as well. And then I welcome any questions.
Craig would like to start. Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. One question is, with CPP starting in January again, are we, and there's an expectation that it's going to be a lot more for both the school board and the employee, so have we taken that into consideration in our budgets?
Yes.
Avis, I can answer that. Actually, we have, one of the things too, is that the, our LAPP costs actually went down, so they kind of counteract each other in the expenses. But you might have another explanation, but I know that's one of the explanations. Avis, do you have any, your part?
I might just add to a bit. So last year, the division did a large analysis on the change in premiums. That's for each of our different categories, such as life, disability, LAPP, CPP, EI, and what all the effects would be. And that's for each of the major groups, so ATA, the different types of groups within like educational assistance, library support, and we did a comprehensive one, updated what the average benefit cost would be. So that's why we are showing that we have some savings on the salary side, is because those average costs are for the whole year. However, on the first quarter, we haven't incurred some of those costs, such as CPP and EI, for those staff that have already reached over the annual YMP. So starting in quarter 2, we'll have January and February, that will then start including those benefit costs for the division, and then moving on to quarter 3 and likely quarter 4 as well. So hopefully, that helps clarify.
The other question, just on statement of financial position, with portfolio investments, I know that we have them in GICs and term deposits. Are we able to withdraw those funds without a penalty if needed be?
I'll answer that one. So all those investments are called 90-day term accounts. So all we have to do is give 90 days' notice in advance to actually pull that money out without any penalties, and that's very easy to do. In theory, could we ever talk to the bank and say, we need to pull out money quickly because of one reason or another? That would be a discussion with us in the bank. But overall, we just have to give 90 days' planning. When we did look at how much we put in investments, we did ensure that we keep a good float in just regular cash, so that should cover the large amount of unexpected or unprojected costs that may occur. And then for our large projects, or large capital projects, we know when those are going to come, such as the technology evergreen phases, and then we obviously would have way more than 90 days' notice to pull that money into cash so it can be used.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Tyler.
On the salaries and benefits part, I would have expected that our sub-costs would be significantly higher with COVID, which don't seem to be either in there, or they're just not significant enough compared to the overall salaries. So I just wondered if it was just that, the number's just not that big, that it doesn't make that much of a difference in there, or did we just budget for having higher costs with subs in COVID, or what, just kind of how that works out that our salaries are still lower than our forecast?
Christine can probably answer as well, but we did increase, or we did review, the budget allocation to take into account that we knew sub-costs were going to be higher this year, especially with all the leaves and with COVID.
Any other question? Go ahead, Christina.
First of all, I just want to say, welcome, Avis. Thank you. I think it bodes well for your team, Christine, that our former auditor wants to be on their mind. And I want to just appreciate the communication of financial information. I know this is, can be very challenging for communities to understand the inner workings of financial pieces of a division this large, and so I really appreciate the continued commitment and the transition from Mark to Avis to continue that. So thank you. If I understand correctly, contingency funds are allocated to the school, and the school has control of when and what they use that for, within, I assume, within parameters. Do we just allocate that from, at the division, at the beginning of the year? Or can I understand how we get a contingency fund?
To be helpful with that question is, so each of the schools are allocated so much, so elementary schools are allocated on a very much centralized model, where the secondary schools are allocated on a per-student model. Then the school themselves go through all of their budget items, such as staffing costs, supply costs, service costs. And if they have some surplus, or if they're unsure if they're going to be spending this in one year or another, that's when they deem it as contingency. So often, they'll carry forward from one year to another, because they may not need to utilize that contingency. If they don't utilize it, it goes back into their school-based reserve accounts.
Thanks very much.
Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Craig?
Yeah, on that, I know the government has concerns whether boards have surpluses or not. Is there any mandate that we have to spend contingency funds after a certain period of time, or is it a percentage that we can, a threshold that we have to keep, or can't in that kind of excess funding, surpluses?
So to try and answer your question, and obviously Christine can jump in, she knows it better than I do, but when it comes to contingency and use of contingency and how things are spent, what they look at is each, as a division, our total adjusted accumulated surplus from operations, which is then, any unspent funds would go into that school-based reserve, and that gets added to our school-based reserves. There is a potential that we will have a maximum cap put on in a couple of years. That number is still, still undetermined at this point specifically, and my understanding is they might actually indicate what that percentage is coming up in the next provincial budget announcement. However, we do have a pretty good idea what that is, and that's part of the big budget, long-term planning that the division has done with executive council and instructional budget, to try to utilize some of these reserves so we're within the required areas for the use of reserves. When I'm talking about contingency accounts, also to clarify, I think overall, as a division, we try to minimize what schools retain in a contingency account. So some schools, they'll have a small balance of a couple thousand. I know one department that is revenue-driven has put, I think about $30,000 in contingency in case we don't realize the revenues, or we have parents that can't pay those revenues. So that's what some of the contingencies are. Overall, in 21, 22, if I remember correctly, the total contingencies for all divisions, including all departments, all schools, was about $145,000 total. So it's not a big number when you're looking at the big picture, and we try to minimize that as much as possible when we're talking about budgeting with schools.
Thank you. And I'm not able to see Christine. I just want to confirm that she doesn't have any questions, Leon. She's good? Okay, sounds good. Perfect. So we do need to have a motion to approve the First Quarter Financial Report. Christina?
A motion to approve the First Quarter Financial Report as presented.
Thank you. And see no further questions. Those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for joining us, Avis. Welcome, and we look forward to seeing more of you and Mark. We will miss you. Vulcan County is lucky to have you, so thank you for all your time.
It's been my privilege serving the board and the students at Leftbridge School Division, and I know I'm leaving in great hands, so that's the easy way of heading out then.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you as well.
So moving on to 6.3 is Board Meeting Time, and I will let Craig introduce that. He brought this board.
Okay. At the last meeting, we decided to have an ad hoc committee look at board meeting times. So Christina and Andrea, and myself, and Mike met on the 18th of January. And if you turn and look at your agenda, you will notice that I did all 60 boards, and came up with their start time, as far as I could tell, their end times, the number, and I randomly picked different times, because number one, COVID makes a difference on the meeting times. So I went back to pre-COVID, COVID, and then this year, and came up with, basically, based on what I found, the different hours that they met, the four based on what I found, the different hours that they met, the frequency that they met. Now, that was just board meetings. Like some of these boards do have a committee, the whole, every month too. And then the frequency, and you'll notice that there's some. And then extra meetings and whether they supply lunch or supper and obligations. And that was one. So, the summary, you can look at it. Forty percent of the boards meet in the morning, 25% meet in the afternoon, and about 30% late evening. And there's four that had various times. Some of them, and I might add, you can't find any information on their webpage. And on some of them, this was one for entrance, I tried to find out their minutes and you had to have a password, which seems strange because they're public documents, but anyway. So, I went through and I tried to come up with an average. And the average is about five, a little over five hours per meeting. And then again, number of meetings, how many met once a month, twice a month, an unknown. Extra meetings, lunch and supper. And out of the 32 boards that actually listed their trustees and had information on them, 99 trustees have full-time work obligations. And 28 boards, there were no information was available on the trustees. So, we met as a committee. And I'll just let Andrea and Christina talk a little bit about it. And I want to hear what everyone else has to say. And then I might, we probably bring a motion forward after that. But before the motion, I'd like to just hear what everybody says and I'll turn it over to Christina and Andrea.
So I think we spoke for about an hour, I would say, half hour? And just reviewed a few options to try to accommodate the different needs. And I would actually suggest that we maybe put forward the proposal because I think the point of the subcommittee was that we would save time at the large committee. So I would just recommend that we put forward, we made three options. And maybe we could hear those first.
Andrea?
And yes, that would be fine with me. And I, my big one was, I do not want to be fed by the division twice in one meeting, if at all. So, that was where I was coming from.
Okay. So, a couple of things that we discussed. One is, one way to shorten our meetings or make our meetings more efficient is that when we have the audit, it might be wise to have it as a separate meeting because the audit will take a long time. So that was one thing that we talked about. Another one is that when we have, so when we have the audit presentation? No, the audit, when they go over, the auditor comes and they talk about. Yeah, so I noticed a lot of boards, a lot of boards will have a separate meeting just for the audit because it does take a lot of time if you're doing it in depth. The other one is a separate meeting for the budget. So it's not part of the regular meeting. Do we? Okay. All right. So, some of the, here were the suggestions. And I might add that I did look and I took what Andrea said. If we have one meal, depending on what it is, I figured out that it would cost the board about $2,400 a year. That's with 12 people, $20 a person and 10 meetings or 11 meetings, something like that. The options that we came up with, and I'll make, and I, so this is the part that I don't know. I can make a motion for all three of them. Or we can, I can give it to you and then someone can make a motion on one of those three.
How about you share what your finding was? It sounds like Christina.
So the, one option was that we leave it at 12, two to six. That wasn't the preferred option, but that was one of the options. The other option is one to six, which looks like it's five hours, but then you'd have to have some sort of a half an hour break in between because that's a long time to sit. And so maybe a half an hour break, so you're down to four and a half hours. And the other one was 11 to six, no later than six. And one of the reasons that we really want to stop the meetings before, before, no later than six is because we're aware of family commitments by two of our admin team and three of our board trustees. And we want to develop a work, a life relationship there so that we're not away from our families at night when we could be home. So the third option was 11 to six with a lunch break. And that can be a half an hour, 45 minutes at, say, 1:30. And that, the other advantage of maybe going a little later is, I did look and we were only allowed three public presentations per meeting. Is that correct? That's what it looked like.
My understanding of public presentations, like you mean when people come to present to the board? Oh, my understanding is they're allowed 15 minutes. And that 15 minutes maximum is spread among however many people show up. So if 100 people show up, they split 15 minutes in those tiny little increments. If one person shows up, they can have 15 minutes.
Mike and I were just looking at this because a parent asked about this in the LCI Parent Council. And I believe that each person coming to public forum, if they are doing a presentation, is allowed up to five minutes. And the entire time for public forum is 15 minutes. So that's where the three comes from, is if there's three people that want their full time or done after three.
Okay.
They're allowed up to five minutes individually.
Tyler is correct. If there's four or five and they only take two minutes each, well then.
I think it's written they have five minutes.
I think it was, it was written in the policy.
They are allowed five minutes.
Yeah, I think that's the thing. So.
They can, they can request.
Longer.
They can request to have a meeting with the board if we have too many people, it doesn't fit. But as it's written, 15 minutes.
Three presentations.
Five minutes each, so.
Christina?
I think we're confusing presentation versus public forum. Public forum is a total of roughly 15 minutes each. No more than five minutes though, right? No more than five minutes. Presentation is when they give us two weeks' advance notice with presentation information, taking them up to 15 minutes.
Okay. So, one of the thoughts that we had is that if we, if we still keep the public presentation at quarter to five or five o'clock, and that's the, we were thinking about the 15 minutes there, that would give us an opportunity to discuss what was presented to us, which I think is a valuable opportunity because it's better to discuss it when we're, it's clear and when it's, what's the word I'm looking for? When it's right there in our minds of what they said, instead of waiting a month and then are discussing it. So we could go from 5:15 to six with that kind of thing. This also gives us an opportunity to, if we need a little extra time in camera, it gives us an opportunity. But it was, I think it was agreement, and Mike can kind of say, and Christina and Andrea, but we really felt that the meeting should stop at 6 o'clock. Now, it's going to be hard if you keep a four-hour meeting. The other one's a little easier and the 11 to six is a little, is an easier way to do it. I just might add that one of the things that we have to look at is, this isn't educational division. It's also a business. And we're dealing with 100 and, let me see if I got it right, about 120 million or 130 million dollar budget. We're also dealing with about 1,200 employees. So if we take consideration of what we just learned in our board orientation of oversight, accountability, and fiduciary duty, it would seem to me that a four-hour meeting is a little on the light side of all three of those things. Now, some of these boards, and I'll just add that, some of these boards, there is one board that their school division is basically LCI, Chinook, and one of the middle schools combined population. So, a two and a half hour meeting is probably appropriate for them because it's a small Catholic division. Calgary Public, for instance, they have at least two meetings a month of about five hours each. So that would mean that they're meeting 10 hours. So, those were the three options. We can vote on each one. I don't know how to present. I mean, we've got three options. We can, I can make a motion for one, we can debate it, and then see if we accept it or not accept it. We can do a second or a third. I'm up, I'm at the will of the board on how they want to proceed from here. I've given you the three options.
Okay. So I think knowing that we've heard the information that you guys talked about and researched, you presented the three potentials that you guys feel are best. The information is there from all the research that was done. And just a reminder too, that we can use our committee of the whole for doing some of the board work pieces that we need to. So the three options are two to six, one to six, and 11 to six. So I'd like to go around and have people just say which one they would like first. Tyler?
I just had a question first in regard to being that this is all new and presented with just these times. If people would like more time to think about it or not? I'm willing to make a motion to table this until the next meeting. If people would like more time to decide what they think is important and what times are good. If not, and they want to do it now, that's fine as well.
Are people needing time to think about it? Jenny?
I think Craig brought it up at the last meeting, so we've had lots of time to think about it. So I'm happy we'll make a motion, but I'm wondering if we need to have public forum and then come back to this?
Oh, sorry. I missed the five o'clock. So we will put this on hold and come back to that piece. And I will ask Leanne and Garrett if we have public forum. We do? Okay. Okay. So, so those that are in the teams' meeting that are wanting to speak, if you can please put your name in the side that you would like to speak and the topic that you'd like to speak on in the chat, I'd like it in the chat so that they can identify themselves as well as the topic that they'd like to speak on. So typically, if they were here in person, those that would be speaking on the same topic, we would ask for them to be speaking together during that time slot. So we'll see what we have for our 15 minutes. Do they all have access to the chat, Leanne? Yeah. Okay, so we have one for unmasked. I'll just wait a couple more minutes. Okay, so at this point, we've given a couple of minutes for people to identify themselves. And I just see John Greenshields, he'd like to speak about unmasked students. So I am good for you to go ahead, John, and you'll have five minutes to address your comments to the board.
Thank you. I shouldn't need five minutes. I should need more than a minute. Basically, I'd like to, first of all, say thank you for letting me speak. Second of all, I'd like to point out that all of you there sitting in that room are masked. You have, or you, well, sorry, that one woman's taken her's off, she's put it back now. But you're all sitting with masks to be in, with plastic dividers protecting yourselves. Clearly you value your safety and your health. Is that not correct? Yes? Good. Okay, good. I'm glad we're on the same page there. So, my son also wears a mask to school every day, but the child that sits behind him, directly behind him in class, less than six feet away, doesn't wear a mask because they have been given the right to come to school without a mask because their right to not want to wear a mask trumps the rights of the rest of the students to be safe. This is according to the Lethbridge School Board because in fact, there are school boards, one in Edmonton at least, that has made a rule that you must wear a mask to go into the school. Now, you've claimed to me in your emails that you had no choice, that you must provide this, for this child to go into the classroom without a mask. My question to you is, how does that child's right to go into the class without a mask trump the rights of every other child in the room to be safe? We're all very aware that masks work. You're all wearing them. You all clearly understand this. We have it very clearly printed in your rules. My son has been following the rules, but when he comes home to me in tears and says, "I don't understand why it's like this. I feel unsafe," what am I supposed to tell him? Because the Lethbridge School Board is the, you guys are the people in charge. You're the ones who did that to him. You're the ones who made that rule. You're the ones who allowed that child in the classroom. Why did you do that? How can you defend it? I'm done. Go ahead.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you coming forward with your concerns and sharing with us your son's concerns as a board, that we will be taking your concerns and your perspective into consideration and we'll be getting back to you very shortly. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. Does that mean very shortly, like within the next few minutes or within the next few days?
Nope. By the next board meeting, we would have information, but I can pretty much let you know that it'll be well before the next.
Have to sit in a classroom with this child without a mask for, until you guys are ready to talk about it? Is it really a complicated question? Like, do you really need to discuss it? You all seriously, obviously understand the value of that ask. So what's your problem?
Forward, and we will get back to you with a response. Thank you.
Well, that was really useless. Thanks.
Seeing no other public forum, we'll carry on with our agenda. So we're going back to our board meeting times. I see, is it Gemma or is that under your student? Gemma? We can't hear you.
Sorry. Now can you hear me?
Yep, and it's Gemma.
My name's Caitlin, actually. My daughter's Gemma.
Thank you.
I'm actually the opposite opinion. I'm, I feel that the Omicron variant is not dangerous for kids. And I'm really upset that my kids have to go to school still wearing a mask. So I get that you guys are dealing with both sides of this issue. Clearly that was just demonstrated. But I feel like my kid's right to be able to go to school and feel not like shamed or embarrassed or something if they forgot their mask. Or I feel that this is doing so much emotional damage, so much more than if they were to get the Omicron variant right now. I just don't agree with it. So that's my opinion. You guys have to weigh all the sides. I understand that. But I'm very done with, with the masks. I don't think that they need to be here now.
Thank you very much, Caitlin, for bringing forward your perspective. And as I said to John, that as a board, we will be discussing the concerns brought forward and we'll be able to provide you with a written response prior to our next board meeting, which will be definitely before that time period, but we'll get back to you. Thank you for bringing your concerns forward, Caitlin. Are there any other hands we missed? Bonnie? Okay, Bonnie, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to put my camera on, not that I'm so great to look at, but I, I guess I can't. It doesn't matter. I just wanted to, I realize that my demographic is probably not represented here. But my concern with this whole issue is the lesson or the message that we're giving to our children. Schools are educating citizens of the future. And I suggest that children who do not follow the protocols that have been set out for masks and are still allowed to attend class are being taught a larger lesson, which is that the individual's rights supersede the rights of the other students. And are these the lessons we want our children to learn? So it's a bigger question than masks or anything to do with the pandemic. I understand the politicization of COVID-19 protocols and the sense. I understand the politicization of COVID-19 protocols and the sensitivity required to address these issues. However, schools have in the past, in my experience, attempted to model and teach good citizenship, understanding, and acceptance within the boundaries of safety and common sense. Those who not, do not adhere to the rules are generally corrected and instructed to change their behavior. And I'm just wondering why this situation is any different? If we have guidelines and rules in school and we don't follow through on them, then we are teaching a whole generation of people that their personal opinion overrides the majority and also overrides the authority of the principal and teachers in the school. And I don't think it's a valuable lesson for children to learn. As a society, if we don't have a sense of community or a sense of caring for others, we will not survive. So thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate that you've offered this opportunity for the open forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, for bringing your perspective forward. We appreciate that as a board as we move forward to explore pieces, and we will certainly get back to you prior to our next board meeting. Thank you for bringing your concerns forward, Bonnie.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm seeing another. So it's looking like Clint McKee. You can go ahead, Clint. It's not Clint.
No. Nope, I'm not sure if you can hear me. I'm technically challenged sometimes. Techno, no, technologically challenged. I'm trying to run away from my little kids, so you can't hear them running around in the background. I just wanted to ask or bring up the topic. I couldn't, I was on and off, hence with little kids, about spectators for concerts and sporting events. I'm not sure. I've tried to read what I could about how this decision was made. That parents were yet again not allowed to watch the sporting events right now. My kids are hoping for tournaments outside of our school district, which I think is really sad. So that they can have parents come and watch, or at least a parent come watch. I'm just wondering how that decision came to, since it's not in alignment with AHS standards right now, with as far as public gatherings in buildings such as churches, et cetera. And I'm wondering when this can be rectified. I mean, it would be nice before basketball season's over if we could attend a game in person other than out of district, you know what I mean? So I think it, the other person who spoke, I'm sorry, I don't know, I didn't catch her name, but she, I, she had valid points, and I agree. I think coming together in the schools provides community, and I think it provides parents to show support for the school, for the teachers who need it so much. I am so grateful personally for all the teachers I've done. I, I think it's been hard all the way around for everyone, so I applaud the principals. I applaud. Sorry, I'm not getting a motion. I do this when I'm nervous, sorry. Anyways, and I just think that everyone's doing a lot under a lot of stress, and I think that the kids just need to see their parents or, you know, grandparents in the schools. And I feel really strongly about it. And I'm just wondering how we can make that happen. I, I did email our principal, and he mentioned something to the effect of short, being short-staffed due to, you know, Omicron and you know, COVID in general, and I can totally appreciate that. I know there's been classes where half of them haven't been able to come because they've been sick, so I can see that that would be upsetting and frustrating for the principals, but anyways, I'm probably talking too long, but I just want to say I am grateful for what I'm trying to do. I just don't agree with the motion to suppress having that support for the schools limited at such a time when everybody needs, everyone needs it. So that's my complaint, I guess. Although, I'd like to back that up with, I think everyone's doing a great job at trying to support each other and not step on each other's toes. But I do think we need to revisit this, the subject. I think it affects a lot of people, and I know I am not alone when people are upset about it, and I just want to understand the process of why it is happening and how we can change it, because there are so many people upset about it. Because it's, you know, it doesn't just affect the sports. I know I was grateful people can attend like band concerts before Christmas. That was amazing, and I was so grateful for that, but I'd like to see it continue to improve in attendance and just parents being able to support more than via Zoom conferences, which I know I am very grateful we have that at least, but again, I would like to say I don't agree with this decision, and I would like it to change. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for bringing your concerns forward. I missed your name if you.
I'm Catherine, not Clint, obviously. Yes, my name's Catherine McKee.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So I appreciate you bringing forward your concerns and sharing your perspective. And as a board, we will take that information in, and we'll be able to provide you with a response prior to our next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
There any more, LeAnn? So Cooper? Can you share with us what your concern is?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm Chelsea Lindsay, not Cooper Lindsay. Just very quick, because I know we're, that you're kind of out of time. My concern is mostly with, the same thing has been said with people being able to go in and be spectators at all the different things. But mine is also just a request to take into account maybe those students who, it was great when parents were able to go in or a couple. But the students that maybe don't have a extracurricular activity necessarily, like maybe they didn't make the basketball team, but would like to participate by watching and being able to support the basketball team. I know that when I was in high school, I wasn't on things, but loved going and watching. So I know we're in a tricky situation with numbers right now. But as things hopefully improve and we allow spectators, just to keep in mind those students that might want to have that opportunity, to have that sort of community when they maybe don't fit in anywhere else.
Thank you very much for bringing your concerns and your perspective forward. We appreciate that. And we will be getting back to, previous to our next board meeting. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we will end our public forum portion. And moving back on to our board meeting time. At this point, we were looking to see if board members were wanting time to reflect on this information that was brought forward today, or if they're okay to move forward with some future further discussion. Jenny, you were speaking? You're done speaking?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was done. I was saying I'm good to make a decision myself.
Okay, Christine, I don't see you, but I'm guessing you're still there.
Yeah, I'm here. My video's on. I'm not sure why you can't see me.
No, it just happens between screens and stuff, so. Yeah, no, it's shared screen and everything, so. The information, are you needing more time to think about what was presented?
Well, are we, so I guess my question is, are we voting or are we having a conversation about it?
We're gonna have a conversation on the three times.
Yeah, I'm good to have a conversation about it, for sure.
Okay, so are you okay to start with your?
Oh, sure, I can. Yeah, absolutely. Well, first, Craig, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you did. I'm a visual person. And so it was actually, it was really great for me to see all, like, you did really thorough work, so thank you for that. It was really good to see all the divisions aligned, and I could visually compare start times, total times, hours, and frequencies, so. So thank you for that. Thank you and the committee for all the work for that. I did send a letter in to the committee, and, and in my letter, I did say that at this time, I'm not in favor of making changes, and I'm still cautiously at that, at that position. I appreciate, I appreciate the different times that you, that you gave and the, and just wanting, just acknowledging the need for efficiency, just acknowledging the need that as a board, we need to do our due diligence. I agree with, with both of those things. In my letter, for those that didn't see my letter, I guess that would be the executive, because all of the trustees were on this conversation. I think one of the things I really want us to do as a board is develop efficiency within our meetings prior to moving the schedule around. And I can appreciate that we need more time sometimes to have conversation, but I think we can work on as a board having productive conversation and, and what does that look like? And one of the points that I made is if we simply shift the timeline, we're actually not necessarily dealing with with the issues of, of, of health and function as a board, right? And so the examples that were given to make if meetings efficient were, you know, have the audit as a separate meeting for sure. Separate the meeting for the budget, okay, but that's not in every meeting, and, and that hasn't been in every one of our meetings, and so it's almost, it's almost preemptive to me to make changes before we actually figure out good rhythms. And I know that, so looking at the times that you presented, leave it at two at six, I think leaving it two to six was a hard stop at six. Again, today, we're showing we cannot stop at six, right? We're going to have to go back to in-camera because we didn't complete that agenda. The next that you gave was one to six. For me, that could be an option. It would give more time for conversation, and yet, at the same, again, we need to be intentional to really look at productive conversation. Productive, just meeting management and, and just being efficient without overlooking our, our responsibility. I think that's really important. With the eleven to six, what I wrote down was if we're coming at eleven and having a forty-five minute lunch break, what's the point of coming at eleven? Like, I don't, I question, I don't feel that we need to be, I guess, you know, in, in a large budget that we have, twenty-four hundred dollars seems minimal. However, I don't see it being prudent or responsible to be charging the division more money for lunch when we actually, when I don't think that that's a necessary expense. When I look at unnecessary expenses, I always think, well, what could we get in classrooms with that money? They could use it more than we can for lunch. And so that, that's kind of my, those are my thoughts with this, with these timeframes. And I know that Allison's talked about, you know, introducing committees of the whole prior to board meetings, and so I would be curious how that fits into this conversation, because I don't think we should have those, these, those two conversations separately. Because I, it wouldn't be good if we said, sure, we'll move it one to six, and then, oh, look, we're gonna start a committee of the whole. Okay, well, let's do that at eleven thirty and bring a lunch, right? So I feel that those two conversations kind of need to go together. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Tyler, Jenny, either one of you want to go first?
I, I have a very young family, and so I am in favor of being home earlier. And I did, I did seek feedback from shareholders at our LCI School Council meeting in regards to meeting times and specifically public forum, and because our meeting is open to the public. And we encourage as much participation as we can with our shareholders and involvement. And that way, I did ask their opinion, and the opinion that was shared was that they prefer to be able to have the public portion of our meeting continue to be at a time that they can access. And so that that portion not be moved. But I do think that the overflow conversations that we're having to go back in camera and things like that, I think that I would prefer to start earlier and have our public forum continue to be at five o'clock for the public and for us to start our meetings earlier. So I would be in favor of voting for either the eleven o'clock or the one o'clock start time. And if we don't want to spend money, we can bring lunches. It's what I've done at every other job I've ever had, so I'm okay to bring a bag lunch. And that's my opinion on that. So, and I agree with efficiency, but until we've established those habits, let, I mean, if we start feeling like we're done early, we can adjust times again, but right now, we keep being done pretty late, so.
And Tyler?
Okay, it can take a while. Okay, so what I'm hearing is people really want to be done by six. Okay, fair enough. We'll start with the eleven AM meeting. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we come here to sit down and eat. It just, I'm gonna agree with Christine on that one. It just doesn't make any, any sense to me that we would spend our time, and if we're supposed to be doing this for efficiency, it doesn't make any sense to me that we come here two hours earlier to spend an hour of it eating. Doesn't make any sense. So then, now we started eleven, but let's say we are efficient. So now we're, we're, so I, I also agree with Jenny and that most, my understanding is people don't want to move the public forum from five o'clock, and I don't want to move it from five o'clock either. So now, if we start our meeting at eleven AM, but we are efficient, let's say we're done in three hours or even four hours. We're done at two or three in the afternoon. So now what do we do? Do we just sit here for two or three hours until the public forum starts? Again, horribly inefficient. Doesn't make any sense. So then what? So the, so the, are we keeping, are we keeping executive council here for two or three more hours? Or do they, do they run back in the middle of their day and try and get something accomplished, then come back here for the public forum? It, it just doesn't make any sense to me to be doing that. So on top of that, I don't have a real flexible job as far as just being able to meet whenever goes. So starting before noon just doesn't work for me. Doesn't work for me at all. I'm open to, I, I would also agree that, okay, based on the history of what's gone on since, since this board started and everything else, I would agree that we do need a little more time. And I can appreciate that people have families and have times and want to be done by six. I can appreciate that. So I, I couldn't, I could go with a one o'clock start time. That makes sense to me. Put an extra hour in there, show up early, get things done. We're not as rushed. You know, you got twenty-five percent more time than we do now. In regard to what Craig said about meeting times, that we're only meeting this much based on this budget and this many employees and everything, really, we have one employee. By that, first of all, only Cheryl is our employee. She's the one that runs the rest of it. But we also have our committee of the whole meetings that also happen. We also have numerous standing committees, ad hoc committees, all the things. There's lots of work going on outside of just what we do here. So the school, the board meeting is just a chance to get everything out in the public, summarize it up, make sure we're doing the things we need to do, get a report on what happened at this committee meeting, or what happened in there. So I think that there's still lots of meeting time going on outside of just our public meeting. What else? So I think also the, I guess, the three, the three thirty for public, we, we have to. we have to still kind of watch our times and when we move earlier because where we've, the reason that we started meetings at three thirty had to do with, that's when school was kind of out. So that's when someone could come from Agnes Davidson to give their presentation on this, or whatever, whatever the case may be, that's a time when staff in the division can see what's going on, can join. That's the time when staff in the division are done and able to come here and um be a part of the meetings and give us the information that we need. So I I I just, I guess what I'm saying is eleven o'clock for me is just part too early, very inefficient, and just doesn't really make a lot of sense uh to me. So, but that being said, like I said, I can totally get on board with a one o'clock start time. That would work for me. If we go to eleven, I honestly can't make the meeting. So anything prior to noon just just doesn't work for me as as an individual, and I get that it's a board, but I guess that's where I'll leave it. So I would, I would have support for one o'clock. Um, and I based on what's kind of going on, I would even probably at this point, support that more so even than staying at two to six, just because I do think at this point, we probably need the extra hour. Um, my only question then is how are we going to, and and maybe it goes back to what Christine said too, how are we going to run that with? Is there going to be a committee of the whole portion or whatever? Because I think we have to, in addition to the five o'clock public forum, I think we have to the, when the public meeting kind of really, really starts, there was a reason for the three thirty and why it wasn't, you know, at one o'clock or something like that, so.
Thank you for your comments. Um, so both Andrea and Christina, I know that you guys shared in your committee. Are you guys comfortable with that you're, you guys want to share now?
I would agree with many of the things being said. I think we said them in our meeting together. Um, I would also support the one to six. I think it's probably a both and Christine's comment around efficiencies and a little bit more time. Um, and in terms of uh scheduling, I think that if if there's general support for a one to six, perhaps we could ask um Allison and Christine to sort of look at our schedule um in terms of how things are laid out. Because I think, again, this is not a everyone needs to decide when we meet. If we all agree to be here at one, I'm comfortable with um our chair and vice chair um letting us know how we will use that time most efficiently. Uh, and I can be here at one. So that would be my support, yeah.
Thank you. And Andrea?
Um, I too would support the one to six. And I'm just looking at the time right now and seeing it's five thirty-four with still twenty-nine agenda items. And so I do think that we do need to do something so that we're not getting home at nine thirty or something like that. And especially when you've got young children at home. And um I do think that the public forum should definitely stay at five so that people are able to get there. And I do appreciate that you had started them at three thirty so people could watch, but I think we will have to move that up to accommodate how much conversation happens.
Thank you. Um, Craig, did you want to share yours, gonna save yours, or you want me to go first? Okay, sounds good. Um, so for me, I'll keep it short. I am a mom and I have three kids at home. And it certainly um would be, especially with this number of school council meetings that we try to get to, as well as division school council. To, um, my kids are gone from the morning and then I don't get to see them when our meetings go till eight thirty or nine o'clock. So it definitely would be nice to shorten that time. Um, I am fine to not have a meal and I I would ask where maybe potentially the twelve o'clock was and that we could eat our meals first before we come, but I'm fine with the one to six time as well. And um I can certainly and um appreciate the efficiency piece and I uh will continue to do my part to um help guide that piece with um having more efficient meetings and take responsibility for that part. And I think that we all um have a part in efficiency as well when we come prepared for meetings and um we make sure that information is brought ahead of time when we are doing agenda planning so that we know what's going to be on the agenda. So um I would certainly be in favor of changing either to twelve or one o'clock.
Like I said, like personally, I could go with twelve to six. And and just make sure we have a break because six hours sitting in one room, chair, you need a little bit of a break, a half an hour break or something. Meals don't, I don't care. I just have a problem uh with my diabetes that if we go late, I have to have something to eat. It's just a matter of fact. Uh, I have to make sure that my blood sugars are in the right area and that I don't get too low. I do, I would like to respond to one co- a couple of comments by Tyler because in the Education Act, it doesn't say that we only have one employee. The Education Act never says that we have one employee. It says we have to hire a superintendent, we have to hire a secretary treasurer. And then it says, and other employees as we see fit. So it bothers me when people in Aspen that say that we only have one employee. No, we we have more, but and that's our job because we have to do the whole budget. We have to do that. We delegate a lot of the responsibility to our superintendent, rightly so, but I just would like to clarify that. Um, I'm not hung up on the eleven o'clock meeting. Twelve o'clock, if somebody would like twelve o'clock to six, that's fine with me too. Uh, I don't think one to six is going to work right now because we've already proven in the last three meetings, and this is going to go longer than six o'clock tonight. Uh, it gives us that opportunity to be flexible. And the other thing is, we had some good presentations today. And to not have the board involved in the discussion of how we're going to respond to them, then why are they making a presentation to the board? If it's just going to be the superintendent and the and the board chair, well, let's just say, well, go talk to them privately. So if someone's going to make the opportunity to play, to bond to us and board, we need to take the time to discuss it. And that's probably going to have to be an in camera after the the presentation. So I think that that gives us the flexibility to do all of that. Uh, I I agree, maybe eleven o'clock isn't the right time. I I personally, I would like to go nine to three or nine to four, but that wasn't the committee. I I could entertain a, and I think Andrea wouldn't mind or Christine wouldn't mind if we said twelve to six. I mean, it's not a big deal, but it gives us that flexibility in case we have something to discuss. Uh, as far as committee of the whole, I would probably prefer to do it separately from our meeting because a half an hour didn't give us enough time. And maybe a committee of the whole is is a better time to do some of that stuff. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, if you want me to make the motion for one to six or twelve to six, I don't care.
Okay, um, just prior to making a motion, I just am seeing some chat going on on our teams meeting. And I just want to remind the public that the chat place is not a place um for conversation. Um, if you can please refrain from making comments in there, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. And I'll turn it back to Craig if you were making a motion or not.
So I will ask Christina and Andrea if they approve changing it from two to one to six to twelve thirty-six or one twelve to six. Uh, I won't make a motion unless I've got commitment.
Before the motion, I would again just say, it doesn't make sense to me to come at twelve to take a half hour break. Yeah, it's, I I, to me, one to five, get it done. I'm a pro one guy. I would, I would vote against. I would vote against twelve to six, just so you know, I'm fine with one to six. Um, twelve to six and then taking a break in there for a half hour doesn't make sense to me. So I I wouldn't support that.
My intention wasn't that there would be any break. It would be just come at twelve and you would have eaten first.
Well, I I would just say that in the numerous meetings I've gone to, after two, two and a half hours, everybody needs a break. You need a little bit of time to refresh, to go to the bathroom, to get a drink, whatever, and maybe a little time to have a conversation between trustees and central office. Because we're trying to develop rapport here. Now, it doesn't have to be a half an hour. It can be fifteen minutes. I don't care. But if we say in a meeting, let's take a fifteen, twenty minute break, so be it. But if you go one to six without a break, that's five hours. And I don't think at the end of five hours without a break that we're really functioning at our best. So there has to be some sort of break put in there. Some of us are a little older than others and we do need a break. Well, no, I mean, if if we want to break it up into two fifteen, I don't care. It's just that, you know, if you, if you take two fifteen minute breaks and then you put it in, you still only have four and a half hour meeting. So can we get it done?
And we've certainly um had breaks in between, usually for five to ten minutes when we needed them. So so you were asking um both Andrea and Christina?
Yeah. If they're comfortable with one to six and they don't want to go twelve to six, I'll make the motion one to six. Well, it's up to the committee.
I'm good with one to six. I I'm in the same boat as Tyler. I I could respect the need for, to be at home with kiddos. I also work during the day and it's a lot to pull myself away. And I imagine it's the same for the executive council, who also needs to attend to our schools in this very trying time.
Andrea? I would like to try the one to six to see if it helps and then move our committee of the whole to a different time so it's not um crouching on the meeting and see if that, if that helps. I really think it's worthwhile for the members to be home.
And I see Christine has a question or a comment.
I just wanted to say, even if we do one to six now, it doesn't mean we can't revisit it, right? We can take it for a few months and see how it goes and see what unfolds as far as committees of the whole and what those look like, and then we can revisit it. And I I think that's, and that, and I think that's okay to do. And then um with that timeframe, Tyler's able to to complete his morning work and have his lunch. We're able to be intentional with working on what's sufficient and what isn't efficient within our meeting times. I think if we give too broad of a thing, too broad of a timeframe, um, we're not, we're not put in a position to need to deal with with some skill sets that we might need to deal with. So anyways, so I would support for, I would support the one to six at this time.
Okay, um, I move that we, starting in February, start our meetings at one o'clock and go till six with the opportunity because of the the meeting, that we can extend it past six on that one. That make sense? On my motion?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, that we go one to six and that if we need to extend it, we 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 can. Uh, and that we continue to have the public forum at five o'clock. So that's my motion. And just to finish speaking on it, I agree, I think this could be a test try. We can see how it works. If things need to be adapted later on, we can still revisit it later on. We have the information, we have all of that. So I'm fine with that, and that's my motion.
Leanne, you were able to capture that? Okay, sounds good. Any further comments? Seeing none, those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. So our next agenda item is the Community Engagement Committee Terms of Reference. So was Jenny, are you prepared?
Yes. Um, thank you for your patience for this a long awaited Terms of Reference. We tabled it at our first meeting. So that's like, it's waiting a long time. So we finally got it figured out. And we just made the changes you see highlighted in red. Um, the idea of the word implement didn't seem appropriate for the role that the community engagement actually fulfills. And so we had recommend, but we do still do some of the work to make these things happen. And so that's the line you see with assist with the implement implementation of strat- of strategies where possible. So um, all in favor of, do I make that motion? Okay, um, what's up? Oh, right. That's your job. Sorry. I would like to motion um that the board accept the Community Engagement Committee. Actually, Cheryl, would this be the more appropriate time before we accept these? There was discussion because the website is called the Public Engagement website, but the title of our committee is Community Engagement Committee. And so the committee discussed what we should actually be called and asked me to bring it to the board. Would this be the perfect time to make that change if we're changing?
Let's do that. Just for time's sake, Jenny, let, we can put that on the uh agenda in a future time. I think that's fine. It's not, it's not immediate, so it's okay.
Okay, okay. Well, then you might see these again. But for now, can I make a motion that they be accepted as presented?
Perfect. And that should be as amended? Christine?
Oh, that's what I meant. Yeah, we're getting there. I'm learning. I'll, I'll get there one day.
Perfect. So Jenny's motion is to accept the Community Engagement Committee Terms of Reference as as amended. And is there any further comments? Those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Then the next item is six point five pandemic plan, uh, the document. And Jenny?
Me again. Um, okay, I just um with us reviewing all the documentation um with as much um engagement as we've had from the community around COVID, in reading through our pandemic plan, um, I I recognize that the pandemic plan is intended to be a general document that would apply to a pandemic in general, any pandemic. Um, and so my concern with the document as it's written is that it is specific to influenza pandemic and that we could perhaps change the wordage to make it more generalized. Because as we've seen, we had a COVID pandemic, which is an infection from COVID, whereas influenza is a different type of infection. And so it would be more accurate um and pertinent to maybe change some of the wordage in this document. As well as having now been nearly two years through a pandemic, there is updated research that we could update in this. And so just with that background, um, sorry, I jotted this down as we were talking in our committee of the whole. So I apologize for not sending out and writing to everybody, but I'll read down, I'll read out what I wrote down and 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 I'm open to us adjusting it, however the board sees appropriate. But what I wrote down is that the board review and update the governing document. Um, oh, sorry, the I'm, that the board form an ad hoc committee, committee of three or more trustees to review and update the governing document, Lesbridge School Division Pandemic Plan. Including adjusting language and wordage specific to an influenza pandemic with an intention to submit an updated plan for board approval at the March twenty twenty-two board meeting. So before I make that motion, was there any adjustments or conversation that people would, is that your job to ask? Sorry.
Can you uh read it again for us?
Yeah, sorry. Just, can I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I gotta do it. I gotta dive right in.
Make the motion and then, but I want to make sure everybody can hear it, just because we haven't received it until now.
Sorry, I apologize for that. I move that the board form an ad hoc committee of three or more trustees to review and update the governing document, Lesbridge School Division Pandemic Plan, including adjusting language and wordage specific to an influenza pandemic with an intention to submit an updated plan for board approval at the March twenty twenty-two board meeting.
Okay, so looking for any questions or comments? Tyler?
Are you looking just for trustees to be on this, or are you going to include executive council of some form? Because they're the ones who actually have to put the plan in place. So I think you need to have, you need to have somebody there who understands the practicality of the document and how it actually works.
So with exec council, should I put that in there? Three or more trustees with executive council?
Actually, an ad hoc committee certainly could just invite. So so it um so you could say, you know, put together an ad hoc committee comprised of board members and and you could say, and executive council as appropriate, right? Because you don't have to say how many members. It would be up to that ad hoc committee what you deem as appropriate in terms of inviting, right? And so it could be where Christine might be more appropriate or or Mike or more, again, so as appropriate would work, yeah. So comprised of So comprised of two to three trustees and executive council as deemed appropriate. And then it's the committee members that decide that.
And, um, for me, I know you said three or more. Um, I would strongly suggest that it's either two or three. If you have more than three, it's now quorum and we cannot do that. So, um, I am fine whether you put in there specify two or specify three, but, um, I'm not comfortable with three or more. And I just need to do another reminder out. If you are on the team's meeting, you do need to stop putting comments in the chat. And, uh, if you can please do that now, stop doing comments, that'd be great, thank you. Go ahead, Craig.
Just, just a question to, to the admin team. And it has something to do with the pandemic plan. But when I was going over the pandemic plan.
Okay, Craig, we're not going to get into the pandemic.
No, 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 it's just, it's just something that, that struck me. As part of our, I'm not going to discuss the pandemic plan. I'm just wondering, does the board have a disaster plan also?
Disaster recovery plan as an administrative document, yes. It involves like computers and, yeah.
Well, but personnel in that too?
What's that?
Does it include personnel?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be clarified because when I was reading that, I was wondering if we.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, so Jenny, did you have clarification of number of trustees you were wanting?
No, I just want Cheryl to repeat her perfect words for me so I can write them down. What did you say?
Beginning, and I don't know about so perfect, but she could certainly, because you start, I mean, really all you're adding is, you know, you, you're making the motion to form an ad hoc committee comprised of two, three, what? And you, you, because you don't have any terms of reference for it, you should specify.
So let's say three trustees.
Three trustees, an executive council members as deemed appropriate.
Okay, there you go.
For the purpose of, and, and to be honest, Jenny, I don't know. And maybe you want to or don't want to. I don't know if you have to be so specific about the review because really you might find more things, right? So you could say to review and update the pandemic document. Because then you might see other things in there that you're thinking, oh, well gee, that should be updated or that. Because this potentially, it's been two years. There's potentially other things besides the influenza piece. And so you could just end it at update, review and update the pandemic plan for board review, March 2022.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no, I think everybody's good with that as long as Leanne has it written down. She's good. So we have the intent of that. Any further comments? Okay, and those in favor? And those opposed? So there's Christine is opposed. Thank you, and that's carried.
No, I was in favor.
Oh, sorry, she was in favor, her hand just went up. Awesome, thank you. So that is carried. Um, so with that, uh, Cheryl, do you want us to get the people for that now or? Perfect. Okay, so who has some time available coming up? Um, so Craig, Christine Light and Jenny? Any fighters? Andrea's like wanting. And Andrea? Okay, so one of you guys needs to battle it out. Jenny's battling it out. Jenny, are you? Yeah, go ahead. There's too many, yeah. No, Andrea's good to not. Okay, so our three then, nope. So our three then are Craig, Jenny and Christine. Perfect. Thank you. Nope. Perfect, okay.
And then sorry, Allison, is Jenny chairing this committee? Do we need a chair for this committee?
I will volunteer to chair unless there's anyone who wants.
I don't think anybody's fighting you for that, so.
Arm wrestle me for it.
Nope. Perfect, okay. So with that, um, I will move on to the division highlights, but I see that we have our, um, six o'clock coming upon us. Um, and I am thinking that I certainly need a break. Anybody else? Can we meet back at 6:05 after we extend the meeting? People good with that? So Craig? Perfect, and all in favor? And that's carried. And we will take a break and meet back here at 6:05. And for the public, please stay, we have like lots of exciting things to share, so. So we're back on, thank you, everybody. So I'd like to start back onto our, some of our exciting pieces. And this is why I asked people to stay on, a couple are still on, good. Um, so we get to do division highlights. This is kind of an exciting part to see some of the great, exciting things that our trustees are finding out in our division. So who would like to start? Anybody, Andrea?
Um, I was able to dust off my Cindy Lou Who outfit and go to General Stewart on their Grinch Day and help in the, in a variety of classrooms and in kindergarten, which was really great. And I was also able to get to Probie for their full day Christmas event, which, um, involved horse drawn wagons and a Santa that was amazing. And, um, parents making cocoa. And so I felt warmly welcomed at both of those schools. And then just since we've been back, I've been trying to reach out to my schools by email just with encouragement for my four schools. And I hope to get to all of their council meetings.
Excellent, thanks Andrea. Who would like to go next? Christina?
Uh, I just wanted to highlight a student from Chinook, uh, who was celebrated at this recent school council meeting, um, Madison Alfred, who created stockings for the YWCA and was, you know, celebrated in the media and things. I'm sure many people have heard, but just wanted to pass that along. Uh, so congratulations to Madison for her hard work. And, uh, unfortunately, I'm missing Park Meadows tonight, so I don't have an update from them. Uh, but was able to visit, um, Plaxton School Council Meeting and just hear about the, the excellent work that they're doing there. They were, uh, in particular, really celebrating their hot lunch program that was going really well, um, that was building up some, uh, funds for their school council that they're really excited to use to benefit their students. So, um, happy to see that piece of, um, joy. I know lots of students really enjoy hot lunch, so, um, just wanted to pass that along.
Well, thank you. Craig?
Well, in, in December, after our board meeting, I was supposed to go to Moana on Wednesday and a turkey lunch on Thursday at Fleetwood Botten, Moana at Wilson. And unfortunately, I got sick and had to cancel both of those. But we did have a school council in, at Wilson this month and, uh, they're doing quite well. They were able to use some of the money they funded to buy extra guitars because they have a really good, uh, music teacher who's really into guitars. And so they purchased enough guitars so that they can learn a little bit better. They're having a turkey bingo sometime. And, um, basically in January, they were still doing pretty good as far as COVID. I don't know anything else that's happened, but it sounds, they've got a pretty good functioning school council. So, and I get a meeting tomorrow at Fleetwood Botten.
Excellent, thank you. Christine, would you like to go next?
Sure, I, it's, it's just been great to connect with some of my administrators and, uh, just to be able to encourage them and hear where, where things are at, uh, with them. And I think continued highlight and cheers to all the staff for just persevering and, um, doing your best and being, being professional and creative and, and having tenacity and just pushing forward, um, in a hard season, in a continuously hard season. And I know that the break wasn't long enough and we came back, um, just to, just to more questions, right? And that, that's definitely an overarching feeling with our, our staff. And so cheers to them for persevering. Um, prior to Division School Council, we had a digital citizenship presentation from Mike Ribble and that was well received. Um, there were quite a few parents there and definitely, um, he could be a guest, guest speaker several times throughout the year. It's, it's a continuing conversation.
Thanks, Tyler?
I don't really have anything. Um, maybe just a big shout out to all the staff in the division just based on coming back and this Omicron thing we got going on and the absences and the people that are out and away and trying to staff and keep the schools running and keep the students engaged. And so just a, a big thank you to everyone, uh, for working hard. We know it's tough trying to keep it all together right now. So just a, a big thank you to everyone for all their hard work. And, uh, hopefully this too shall pass someday.
Jenny?
Um, I just, oh, can you hear me good? Um, I just wanted to highlight our, um, high school students and how hard they're working right now and that they are doing their final exams. And, and, um, I've had the opportunity to talk with a few different high school students and their parents and, and everybody studying hard and doing their exams and happy to be there. And, and I, I just am proud of our students and the hard work and that they show up to these and it's, they get to prove everything they've learned and, and feel that satisfaction that comes with that. And so I think it's an important part of education. And just thinking of our students while they're going through their exams right now.
Thank you. Um, so for my highlights, I definitely want to, you know, appreciate the school council meetings that been able to attend in December. I was also able to go to Senator Joyce Fairburn for the, um, Christmas concert, the band concert, and that was fabulous. And just to see people all there together was fabulous. Couple of other highlights is that, um, going and knowing that parent communities are coming together, the staff communities are coming together to count masks and kits is absolutely amazing and phenomenal. It's at quite actually a number of hours that, um, staff and parents are putting together to get those already, doing them, those in a sanitizing fashion and being able to ensure that there's labels on there so that families can, you know, go and actually know how to use the, the kits if they don't have access to that piece. So, um, just a huge thank you out to every school and especially the ones that have been waiting. And I know that just yesterday, a number of more schools got it and they were waiting. And so they were mad dash trying to get parents and staff to get those up with the shortages, being able to get those out. So I appreciate that work. Um, and then one school council meeting that I was at this past week that I really want to highlight that was really neat is that, um, there was some participants on the school council that, um, hadn't been participants in the past that often. And one of them, uh, wasn't fluent in speaking English. And there was another participant on the school council meeting that was able to come on and say, could I translate for you? And just really being able to see that, uh, parent community coming together to work together, um, to be able to help that, uh, parent be able, his, it was so cute. His student was sitting beside him trying to translate and just some of the conversation, um, wasn't necessarily what the student was able to translate, but this other parent came on and it was just great to see that, that, uh, the community working together. And so that was such a great highlight, uh, for me this last month. So with that, um, appreciate all the work that our schools are doing. And I'll move on now to the board chair report, um, which kind of goes right into some of the things that I've been highlighting when I've gone out to school councils is just a great appreciation. When I look at, we came back from the, um, holiday break and parents needed to navigate that first week back. And really that appreciation out to parents that navigated through that first week. And don't want to get emotional, but I certainly in talking, and I know Christine talked about talking to the principals and, um, you know, hearing from so many staff members of the struggles over the last three weeks. And I know that, um, they're there for our kids every single day. And they're, they're struggling to get staff in those classrooms every single day. And I think that just that appreciation that, um, we as a board put out there for all the work that our division staff is doing, that our teachers, our administrators and all the staff that are doing, to be getting, um, adults in front of our students. And I know there was a highlight in regards to our students are into their assessment week. And this month for our students that are in high school, just an appreciation out to them where they're having substitute teachers come in, doing those reviews with them. They have lots of anxiety, lots of stress. And I think that as, uh, as a board, just really showing our appreciation to all the work and all the pressures that are upon everybody in our community, in our staff and community. So thank you. So, um, certainly didn't want to get emotional by any means, but with that, I'd like to go on to our next agenda item, which is community conversations. And I'm super excited. I know when I typed my report, I didn't necessarily have the details, but I do now have the details, um, for our first community conversation. So at our December board meeting, it was decided that we would have these on a regular monthly basis. And our first one is going to be on February 10th from 6:30 to 8:00. At, it's called the Collective. The Collective is on Third Ave, South, um, just in the, I think it's High Brace parking lot, just on Third Ave. And what it is, the Collective is a place where, um, community members can go and, um, have conversation and they offer workspaces and things like that during the day to business community. And they have a little coffee bar there. So they, I've worked together with them for us to be able to, um, access their space and to be able to provide coffee, tea and hot chocolate to the public that are going to be able to come and meet with us as trustees. So as we said when we were making the, the motion to vote this in is that the trustees that are able to go can come. And knowing that, um, this is certainly, didn't know the date or anything yet. So, um, as trustees, if you're able to come, that's great if you can let me know. Um, and then I'll work together with Garrett to ensure that we get some communication out to the public. And this is something that you can share with your, um, school councils. And, um, if we can just wait a little bit so that Garrett can, um, get, uh, communication piece ready for that, um, for us to be able to send out. So are there any questions about this? Chris, uh, Jenny, sorry.
Sorry, can you just confirm the, the venue and the time?
Yep, so the venue is called the Collective. I can, somebody look it up quickly, get the address. Okay, so it's called the Collective. We have space booked from 6:30 to 8:30. The event will run 6:30 to 8:00. So we're, um, tidying up and finishing up in that last half hour. But the event will be 6:30 to 8:00 on February 10th. And any member of the public is welcome to come and have conversations, um, with us. Any other questions? 1315 Third Avenue, South. There's lots of parking in that area. It's called High Brace is the name of the, um, you know where I'm talking? Yeah.
That was the, the, uh, they make braces and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just in behind, so it's in that parking lot and the building is just in behind. There's a building there.
It's the old wash, it's the old drive through washing for cars.
I think we'd have to ask somebody else that piece, but, okay. And, and they are, um, intending as well to work together with Garrett to be able to, um, share the information as well, so. Perfect. So with that, I'll move on to the, seeing no other questions, I'll move on to the next. Is I added regular board meeting agenda or board meeting highlights? I'm just gonna go, so what we have is Garrett provides, um, us with our agenda or our meeting highlights after our board meeting. And he sends that out to our school councils. And typically as a liaison trustee, we review those highlights when we are at school council meetings. So, um, just wanted to have a brief conversation of what, uh, common practice people have been using currently of how they share that. Are you reading through them or are you just grabbing a couple of highlights? Or how are you, uh, dealing with those highlights when you're at your school council meeting? Christina?
Uh, I use the highlight sheets to try to hit at, like, at least the majority of the items if they haven't already been covered in the meeting. Because I feel like the highlights is already a condensed version of what we talked about. So I just want to make sure that we relay as much as possible. One thing I am finding that I'm going to follow up with my councils is that there's not necessarily a designated time for the, um, trustee to speak. And, um, I just want to make sure that they receive any information they need from us if they want it. And not that I want to overstep, it's their council, but if they would like information, I want to make sure that they know, amplify.
Sounds good. Sounds good. And that's certainly one thing that went in talking with Cheryl is she's going to work together with the administrators and the school council chairs just to see if they would, because they don't have to have us on their agenda, but to see if they could have us on the agenda. And even if we're not there, because I know a lot of us have school council meetings on the same night as our board meeting or duplicate school council meetings, but the report is there then even if trustee is not able to be present. Christina?
The other pieces that sometimes is already covered by whoever from the school council is that district school council says all the pieces, because it was reported there also.
Yeah. I hear that as well. So are there other ways that people do the highlights? Tyler?
I will also, just so executive council knows that their reports are being put to good use, I will actually go through the three sections, different sections of the reports from, from executive council and pick out things I think that are important in there, whether they want to know, you know, whether it's orange shirt day or what the progress is on new school or, you know, how, what percentage of staff happens to be, you know, we're trying to fill something like that, that parents like some of that information that's in those reports as well. So I, I always peruse those and just kind of highlight a couple of things out of there.
I appreciate that as a tip, Tyler, for sure. Thank you. Jenny?
Um, I use them, there's a, at LCI at least, there's, and, and Senator Buchanan, they both have a time for the trustee, trustee report. And so I give a summary of what's in the report there. And then I find them very helpful and useful. So.
Perfect. I just really want to make sure that we do have that opportunity with our parent community to be able to share. And then just another quick reminder that when we do have our in camera portion of board meeting, that that's not pieces that we share at school councils. So with that, we'll move into our associate superintendent reports. And Cheryl, did you want to take it or should I turn it right over to Christine? Okay, go ahead, Christine.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to touch on some highlights from the report. Of course, facilities were, were constantly doing something. And of course with Gary Station, we're heavily into our schematic, just almost finishing schematic design, then we'll go into design development. And so we've got a building shape and some, and, and what the preliminary spaces will look like within the school is pretty exciting. And then we're just going to start into the phase of tweaking a little bit. And then we're actually starting meetings on millwork. So that's always exciting. So, and it's three year capital plan time. So we're working on that big document that will, we won't see a lot of change from that, just some tweaking of that document. And we will, of course, that'll go to the facilities committee and then to the board in March. And then really exciting is we're working on the planning of the Victoria Park High School renovation. And Daniel Heaton is, is, is as our architect and director of facility services, he actually over Christmas holidays, because he has, has an art studio, he built a three D model of the building next door and with the roof to come off and the ability to show, well, if we do this and this and this, this is what's going to change because it's got multi-levels and we need to fix some of that. We need to put an elevator. And of course, the main, the main reason we're doing it is we need to get some really good air quality ventilation and also the air conditioning because it's hot, 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 hot in the summer. And so that's going to be a, a three-year project, several million dollars. Once we get preliminary ideas on what that's going to look, that'll eventually come to the board for a, a review and an approval because of the size and scope of the course of project. So we're pretty excited about that because it's badly needed. The plan is to fund that through capital maintenance renewal. So we, we will hear hopefully February 24th, when they announce the provincial budget, that we are getting some capital maintenance renewal money. And, and then also then we'll look at how we balance that with IMR because it's a three-year project, we have to of course balance it. So in case IMR doesn't show up the next year, how do we keep going in phases and that sort of thing. So really excited for that one. And we were originally having, what do you call value scoping sessions for the Galbraith modernization that we're doing out of planning funds from the government of Alberta. Those were going to happen early January, but because of us coming back and, and having to, of course, get ready for our delayed start, we delayed those value scoping sessions to February ninth and 10th. And so that'll take place at Galbraith with a remote from our consultants out of Calgary and Edmonton. And we've got the facilities committee reps have been invited to that and Allison. And then of course, some parents and the Galbraith administration. So we'll walk through a two-day process on seeing what, what would a modernization look like and what can we do to upgrade that school? And then, and then that goes to a costing process and all that. And then the hopes is at some point, Alberta Education is going to fund that project. So that's the goal. Uh, technology, I'm just going to flip to technology. And we did, oh, sorry, occupational and safety, talking really quick about the tests. My understanding is all, all schools have received their first set of tests and masks. And then there's supposed to be another shipment every two weeks. So we might, I don't know if it means we're getting it this week because they're late, or if they're going to come in another couple of weeks, but they're supposed to send them once every two weeks for the next couple of weeks, next couple, I think, three or four times they'll send, the government will send those out. So the test kits, of course, are the highest in demand. And so we're hoping those get here sooner than later. Uh, technology, if we, like anybody else, were challenged with supply chain issues, we have ordered in advance of when we normally order our evergreening computers or PCs for the elementary phase. We've already placed an order for 700 PCs now because of the fact that basically you put the order in, they'll say, we can't even tell you when you can get them. So we've got them in and hopefully they'll arrive, they'll arrive at some point. But we did order them early, so maybe we'll get them for September. We're not sure yet, but. Um, and Minecraft, really exciting. They've done, created a challenge for K to nine students to construct a school using Minecraft. So got that idea from our, our session we did with Gary Station. So we're kind of excited throughout opportunity for our kids. And transportation, just, you know, it's been a challenging few weeks with transportation with regards to illness. They too have been hit with quite a few illnesses. When you have sixty-three drivers and ten are sick, there's a lot of juggling that has to go through. So we have had, had some buses run quite a bit later than we would like. But nonetheless, we do, they do run regardless if they're going to be late, just in case there is some kids still waiting, they go around and pick them up. And so they've had to do a lot of juggling there. And again, they're, they're hit by the, the illness, just like our schools are. And then finally, just really quick, just a reminder, we have the ICE scholarship event, February 11th. And you can get tickets online for $10 and a great speaker, Scott Armstrong. And I'm going to let, I'll stop there because I'll let Jenny tell you more about that in her report. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Christine? I'm seeing them. Thank you very much, Christine.
All my hands up.
Oh, oh, go ahead, Christine.
I just had a quick question, Christine. Do you know, is there an uptick in people applying to be bus drivers? Have you heard anything about that?
Not an uptick, no. They, they continue to recruit. And like they're continually training, like there's still some coming through a training cycle.
Okay.
They're, they're just recruiting all the time. But an uptick? No, I wouldn't say no.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Craig?
Just wondering, the news reports a couple of weeks ago that a young child in St. Paul was left on a bus and was actually found walking along the road. So what do we have? And do we work with Southland to prevent that? Or what is the, what is that? What do we do to mitigate that problem?
Yeah, the, the protocol is when the, when the bus driver go, is finished the run, they, they're supposed to stop and walk their bus and check their, check all their seats and whatnot. So that, that does not happen. And then we do also, if, if, I mean, if a, a parent, for instance, says, okay, my kid's not home yet and they should, they, they should be, they also have the app, they can see the bus has finished a run. If for some, let's say it's one reason that the bus driver didn't do the protocol and the kid was sitting on the bus, then we, we'd have the, we'd call the depot and say, hey, you need to, there's lots of phoning that happens to make sure we hunt that kid down. We've even sent police. So.
Well, thank you. It's just, it's safe, it's a reassuring effort that we have a mitigation problem.
Yeah, it's, it's our number one, number one priority is making sure those kids get them sent.
Andrea?
And I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that coming back from, you know, every swimming event with little tiny children and how they always walk the bus and find, you know, a bathing suit or something for you. So I always felt assured that I knew that, by counting over and over that I did have them.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine, for your department, for all the work. And moving on to more egg.
As you can see, January is definitely a busy month coming back from our spring break, or spring break, our winter break, I wish it was spring break. Black History Month is February and then Pink Shirt Day. I do have to amend that February 23rd date because that is our teachers convention date, Cheryl. We did amend that date, didn't we? It is the National Pink Shirt Day, but it's not our division Pink Shirt Day. So I will share that out once I've got that one amended for you all. As you can see, instructional services busy supporting parents and students with various requests. At home, in class requests still present as, as we're maneuvering through the restrictions and through COVID. Specialized programming for exceptionalities is an ongoing conversation point. COVID-19 concerns from parents, out of boundary registrations. This is a time of year where sometimes we get a flood of students coming back from winter break from other divisions and coming to us. Independent student status. So we do have students who live alone at sixteen and declare independent student status. And so we've been helping a few of those students manage and work through that piece. And then of course, at-risk youth and crisis response. As many of you know, we had two student deaths in the month of January, which has been really tough for our school teams to manage as well as our counseling teams. They've done amazingly well. And I, I have to say that the one crisis response that I was a part of, I've never been a part of a more amazing response and coordination coordinated effort. So kudos to the, to Winston Churchill and Emmanuel Christian High School, school teams. Celebrations, congratulations. This is also the time of year where we get retirement notices or just changing of career. And so Anna L., our instructional services admin assistant, she has indicated that she is going to be leaving us in August. And then John Chief Caff has also indicated he wants to get back into the classroom and be with kids. So he has for the second semester moved to a pilot project, pilot program that he and I and the teams at Churchill Lyndham Park are working on. So exciting times for John. I'm going to miss him because he's like my, my bosom buddy and my right-hand man. But I know that he'll still be a support for us as we continue to move forward. Enero es la mes de español también. It's the month of Spanish. I've been doing a lot of work with Joey over at Colbanks and with Sharon Maisy over at GS Lakey, looking at potential Spanish bilingual programming for grade six students. So we're now in year six. So our grade five students are moving over to middle school. And so we're now in a process of really looking at the interest level for parents and then as well trying to balance sustainability of the program. As well, you'll just see some feedback. We've been doing a review. I anticipate it will take most of the rest of this year to complete. But after five years, we really wanted to say, okay, well, where are we at and how are we doing with Spanish bilingual programming? And as you can see, the feedback from parents has been really, really rewarding, I think, for the school teams and the teachers and Joey at Colbanks because they, they just can't say enough good stuff about what Spanish bilingual has done for their kids. Kindergarten registration, just a quick one for you all because some of you have had parents who have called about half day or full day or all day, sorry, programming. The process that each of our principals is working on for kindergarten registration is they, they do an expression of interest. So they, they say, what, what are you interested in, in accessing? Do you need a half day? Do you need a full day? And then really they endeavor to try and fill the majority of those requests as best they can, recognizing that it can be quite difficult to hire two teachers, one to teach a half-day program halftime of the week and then an all day. So there's a real balance of resources as well as numbers and interest level there. Dual credit, really cool. Twenty-one kids we have registered for Lethbridge College dual credit this semester. It's the most ever in my experience in the five years here. So we're just pleased as punch to see those dual credit numbers go up and to see kids snapping up those opportunities because it's such a, such a great deal for the kids. And the rest is there for you too. If you have any questions, you will probably within the next six months see a policy of anti-racism, anti-oppression cross the, the table here because I think there's some great work that continues to be done with the Anti-Racism, Anti-Oppression Committee. So thank you. And the rest of the report's there for you.
Thank you, Andrea, and then Jenny.
First of all, I'm very happy for John Chief Caff to be back in the classroom because I think he's going to love that. And my next thing is because kindergarten's dear to my heart. I, once I saw this, I started to Google to see what different schools are doing. And I'm seeing a trend towards the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday programs. And I'm wondering, are admins sitting down with their kindergarten teachers and saying, is this working for our, our demography? Is ease of pickup for parents a reason to not come to school every day for the consistency of routines and social skills and, and accessing speech supports? And I do think that parents want the best for their children and they maybe do want to have them home half of the day because they realize how tired they are. And so I just wondered, like, are they sitting down and listening to the kindergarten teachers and finding out, is it working? Is it, what are they seeing?
So I did do a review, the first year we piloted the all-day programming, Andrea. And I definitely could share that again because what we did is we got feedback from both sides of the parents. And, and what I did, just in a quick nutshell, the reports that we received, there was a definite appetite for ease of pickup, drop-off with buses and riding with their, their siblings. So parents really liked having their kids all day because of being with their siblings and doing that bus ride with their siblings. And of course, work schedule. A lot of parents now no longer just have someone at home to work. A lot of people nowadays really are double income or single parent and really don't have as many opportunities as perhaps they may have in the past to have that half-day option. As well, just I think in, in the other feedback, we definitely had some parents who really liked the half-day, liked the routine every day. Some of the feedback from kindergarten teachers, actually majority of them that responded in, in response to all day or half-day, they said they really liked the opportunity to, to build their resilience through the day so that they were more ready for a full day in grade one. And so it was mimicking more of that grade one classroom. Eventually they could transition developmentally to that point. We do still hear that some kindergarten teachers very much like that half-day. It, it, it really is all over the map. But what we are finding resoundingly is that parents are requesting all day.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I was going to let you know, you said you needed to amend your pink shirt date, but on the document you gave us, it's accurate. It says the sixteenth. So somebody's got your back. And then I actually was going to speak to the kindergarten thing as well because I have a child in kindergarten and he's my fifth child in kindergarten in the last eight years. And I have never provided feedback, nor have I ever been given the opportunity to do so. It was always already in place. And my kids went to Lakeview and they were there when they transitioned from four days a week to full day. And that was not something parents were involved in, that decision-making process. And then my kids now go to Plaxton, which is a new school. So again, that position, that decision was being made for the first time. As far as I'm aware, I'm not, I'm curious what that looks like, that parents feedback piece, how we're collecting that. There's a good chance I've missed emails. So.
And so the feedback that I received, Jenny, I can only speak to the time when I made it division-wide. And that was the first year that we'd moved from half- And that was the first year that we'd moved from half-day to providing some pilot options, okay? And so that feedback came from those pilot schools, and I believe there were four of them at the time. I can share this the next, I don't wanna, you know, spend a lot of time on this today. I definitely can ask my principals at our next elementary meeting, what does it look like, parent consultation and kindergarten? And and we can share that as well.
Thanks. That would be great if it could be revisited. And also if the kindergarten teachers could have, I'll use the word robust, some robust feedback. Is it working for their demography? Is is that parent pickup worth worth it for what you lose in consistency? Because it does see them out of the classroom for four days every other weekend. And even as an adult, when I come back to something, I don't wanna come back to it. You know, like even coming to board training last week was scary for me because I hadn't been there. So that consistent piece of practicing something every day and also getting those services out to them every every day. And I do support that they're autonomous at their schools because maybe for some of the schools, that's the only way that they're going to get the majority of their children there. But if the, if they could sit down and talk together and weigh those pros and cons, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Craig?
Just a couple of questions. The one, you said that if it was halftime, we'd only be hiring a teacher halftime for kindergarten. Wouldn't they teach in the morning and in the afternoon?
I knew this question would come up. So for clarification, Craig, if we have a teacher that we hire for halftime all day, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right? They are going to be teaching all morning AM, right? If we have another option where we need to offer an all-day Monday, Wednesday, we have to hire two teachers to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other question I have, because this is on your independent student status, that one to me is a and I'll refer back. I was shocked when I was in Palliser to find out that Vulcan, a city, a town of 1,500, had eight kids homeless going to school. So what do we do for these independent student statuses? Is that part of the restor- restorative policy? Or what do we do to help these students who, for whatever reason, they are out of the house? And my, when my wife taught in Lethbridge Public in in the LCI, she had three or four that were that. And it was just sad to hear their stories. So what what can we do as a, as a school division to help those students?
And I think that's a really good question. And it really comes down to the the specific situations, like you said, Craig, right? Sometimes Jim might be involved in that situation. Sometimes Kaylee is involved in that situation from the alternative program perspective. But actually, ironically, the two that I've recently worked with have been at Churchill and they have been supported by the counseling team at the school. And they actually are tremendously independent. And I, I think we sometimes have to check our assumptions around an independent student and a 16-year-old because I think we reflect on our own, myself included, and and how at 16, I definitely wasn't ready to hold down a job and pay rent. But what I think I've seen in in these two specific situations is that they're tremendously independent and they've got some great supports. If there ever are concerns, we have a myriad of steps and, you know, Jim talked about some of those different committees that he works on, as well as Kathy does, our counseling coordinator, when we have students that are at risk or high, high-profile at risk in our community. So, I mean, I think we learn from each of the students that we support and there's always something else that we can do, whether that's food scarcity, whether that's housing. There's a myriad of different pieces that often are involved if and and different people that are involved, depending upon what's presenting.
So what I'm getting is that because we coordinate with Fifth, like Fifth on Fifth or whatever, McMahon Services and all that, that we're trying to make sure that these kids do not fall between the cracks. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Morag? Seeing none. Thank you for all the work that you do and your team does. Thank you. And then moving on to Mike.
Thanks, Allison. So I'll just give you some of the highlights here. So in terms of of adding staff, as you're probably aware, one of the things that's been happening is the certification process. So university has gotten their list to Alberta Education. Alberta Education is in the process of certifying brand-new teachers. And so that's something that we're excited for, just to get new people really excited into the profession. That's always great, the energy and enthusiasm they bring. And of course, right now, it's challenging for substitute teachers. So there's great opportunities for them to get in our schools working right away. And so that's been really good. I had the opportunity to join our new administrator mentorship program and just do a little session on teacher growth supervision and evaluation processes. And so that was really a nice opportunity to to have some deep conversations with our new administrators about those things. And they're a great group to work with. So we're very, very fortunate. Then you'll see, I just provided some statistics for, from our our hiring software, Workable, for the 2021 year. And as you can see, there was a fair bit going on. This is work that isn't just done by Human Resources Department. This is work that's distributed throughout the division. So principals, vice principals, school-based administrators are involved in these processes, supervisors, et cetera. So there's a lot of people that work behind the scenes to get the hiring process to work the way that it needs to and to manage all of the applications that we have. So we're obviously very fortunate that people are interested in working in our school division. And then, of course, COVID, as you are well aware, it's consuming a fair bit of time, particularly right now. And I wanted to echo the comments that the trustees made earlier, just how grateful we are for the work that people are doing at the school level. It's not always obvious, if you haven't been in a school, how much has to be done just to get classes running. And when you have a bunch of people who aren't there, how much work has to happen behind the scenes just so we can have classes? And and often when, you know, folks in the public can go, well, you know, school seems to be operating and my kiddo came home and they had a pretty good day, there's a lot that happens behind the scenes to make that happen. So certainly very grateful for that work. And I also wanted to say just to the folks who work in the Human Resources Department, they're just doing a tremendous, tremendous job too, to help support our schools. So really appreciate them. And then certainly a big shout out to all of our substitute and casual personnel as well. You know, they're, they're keeping really busy and they're doing an incredible, incredible job to help make sure that we can keep schools running. So really appreciate all of those groups. And that's it for me, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Jenny?
Could I, could we ask for more information about the hiring process? Would that be something that would, like, I am curious about how many interviews we do for a position or how many people sit on the committee that does the interviewing? Or just kind of the process of how the division does hiring? That's something we could learn about at some point?
Yeah, we could, I could, for our next, at our next board meeting, I could put together a little something for you if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to do that.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, we've talked about the teachers and that, but I'd like to thank the the Human Resource Department because they're probably being stretched as it is. And we lost an employee to a neighboring division. So thank you for the work that they're doing to try and keep everything moving for the principals have less to deal with. I mean, we all know that they have lots to deal with. But thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Craig. And I'll make sure I pass that on.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Of course, my appreciation. So thank you, Mike, for everything. So moving on, next is the public forum responses. Those were both sent out. And we will move on to the superintendent's report. Board priorities report is first.
And, you know, I know I mention this every time I sort of draw a few highlights from the board priority report. This is a report that really informs you as to whether, how the priorities, the board priorities are being addressed. This includes, you know, updated monthly by the leadership team, lets you know what's what's sort of happening. So just a few, I just pulled a few highlights. And just because Trish was so excited about the Student Leadership Mentorship and Wellness Series, I have to highlight that because it's a, it's a Zone Six initiative and it's a collaborative program among the schools. So it's really giving our traditional, we've always had, you know, a division school leadership team. And this is just sort of, you know, how some, the reason I like it is we always talk about challenges. And, you know, there's some really innovative things that we've learned due to COVID as well. And this is one of them where the zones got together. How do we make things really exciting and happen for leadership across the zone, for leadership students? And so this is one of those things where it's it's online, there's broadcasts. They collaborate across the schools. And the first session, the topic was March 2020 to today, it's been something, right? Using Christmas winter break to reset, reload, lead yourself and serve and support others. So a very service-centered leadership theme. And then there's a second session coming up in February. What happens when we are all together and what is the cost when we are not? And so some, just some really good topics. And and I just love it when they've, when our incredibly innovative adults and youth leverage things to make things even better, right? And and things that will continue. Morag already talked about the dual credit courses. Really excited because, Morag, correct me if I'm wrong, we had four students, I think, in the first semester access the Lethbridge College courses. Now we're ready for 25 seats. And so it's really caught on. It's a, it's an amazing way for those students to really not only get credits because we've got four university courses. Then we have a menu of courses that kids can pick up from the college. In other words, it's not, we're not, and it's done again through a Zone Six collaboration. Palliser, one of the associate superintendents there, associate leads the, leads the initiative. And so it's where students from across Zone Six can sign up for the same courses. So it makes it cost-efficient and that we can collaborate with that. So that's exciting. And thank you to Morag for working with trying to remember his name from Jason Cooperi from Palliser to have us as part of that program. Some other, you know, I just want to point out, you know, the whole literacy, numeracy, I'm really proud of the work that Karen and our literacy lead teachers, because we've had it a couple of last few years, and numeracy lead teachers have done over the course of the past years. Because certainly, you know, I've, I mentioned, actually, when I was doing my growth plan with the boards, my goodness, we really do need to take a look at some learning gaps and really do need to make sure that our students have those foundational skills. And and certainly, we've done a lot of work in that area. And as well as the student learning competencies and experiential learning at the, at the secondary level. And I have to say that our off-campus programs are still going strong. Our only barriers, because Andrew Cole is so amazing, really early barriers are if there's barriers at the work site. Like if those work sites have particular rules or things that, you know, are preventing full participation. You know, just a fun on the side, Fifth on Fifth is helping with resume writing, helping with the counseling department. So that's always a great partnership. Innovation and technology. Christine already mentioned the Minecraft education challenge. Like, how much more fun is that than actually having designed just for Lethbridge School Division Minecraft with the site, with the actual geographic site of the new potential school on the west side? So what a great way to stretch our young minds. And Morag talked about early learning and justice education. So I'm just gonna go, keep going. Oh, international students. We have 90 international students over the course of the two semesters. So that's quite astonishing when you think about that and tremendous work done by Trish in that department. And of course, professional learning for administrators and teachers. We've got the thinking routines. Mike talked about the admin, admin mentorship program. It's always a lot of fun to be able to, Mike did one part tonight. I did a different piece than I did instructional supervision. And so it's a lot of fun to work with those new administrators. Technology is always in the forefront. One thing for sure about our technology, they're really always keep us safe. We've got cybersecurity training happening. And they've got quite a sound, rigorous program in place to make sure that people are aware of the type of of firewalls and and different things we have in place for that. Our teacher induction program, and again, it's it's that piece of, we really incredibly miss the person-to-person teacher induction program to get to know those young teachers that way. But we're making it work through technology. ESL, my goodness, Ann Muldoon and company. And I know that Bev Smith from Literacy also does ESL and Ann, who they've had a lot of new students come in, so 20 intakes so far in January. And of course, it's interesting because you see sort of that assessment going on in the, in the, in one of the conference rooms. It's been going on for a couple of weeks since the beginning of, since post-winter break. And well, and then, of course, Christine talked about the excitement with different things that is happening with consultation with capital, with designing, right? Both with Galbraith and with Victoria Park. Any questions?
Craig?
Just wondering if at the next board meeting or whenever, that you could give us a little bit of an outline of what we do for teacher induction? I think that would be, that would be educational for the trustees.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cheryl on the board priorities report? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Cheryl. You can just keep going.
Yeah, okay.
Donations.
Donations and support, of course. I know any of you who saw this, it filled your, filled your hearts. Because I know it certainly filled my hearts, you know, walking over to Victoria Park and seeing the the hampers prepared for the students over there. We have such, you know, so grateful for the generous community that we live in. And the, you know, watching those young men and women and families pick up those hampers is it, well, it's nothing better than filling your heart. And then, and Westminster, same thing. Cargill is, what an amazing supporter for that school. It's just astonishing what Cargill does for Westminster School. Same thing, their families all had some, some, received a holiday meal kits sponsored by Cargill. I was there on the, on the, I think it was the morning that the little ones, the eat program was gonna do sort of an out, it was there last day and outdoor thing. And and there they were, you know, all the, all of the kits, meal kits for the families, you know, with a ham and a turkey and and like everything you needed for a meal. And and the, you know, how happy those types of gestures and how fulfilling that is to families. And and, you know, sort of just giving that piece of recognizing and remembering, not all fam, the holidays can be hard on families, right? Those of us who have been blessed with, you know, having good support and economically and socially and all of that to be able to enjoy those kinds of festive seasons, there's lots of families who that's a real challenge. And so really grateful that we have community that, and schools that organize that and support that. Excellent. So acknowledgement of excellence. As we showcase a couple of schools each time, Westminster, I just, I just, I can't, you can't help but smile whenever you work with Westminster because they're so excited for their first-ever virtual Christmas concert. And it worked and it was got delivered and they did everything right. And they're pretty pumped about that. I talked about their meal kits. And Park Meadows, you know, showcased their literacy, numeracy, inclusion. They really focus. They're very purposeful about the board strategic priorities. And of course, their big exciting dance-a-thon. And again, sort of don't, COVID doesn't get in the way. When they figure out how to leverage technology and do things differently, they do it and they raise $14,000. Like, oh, my goodness. And they figured out how to do scientists in school, field trips, virtual field trips, author illustrator visits. And so, you know, our schools are being really innovative to get those kinds of exciting, engaging things to kids. Our Emmanuel Christian Secondary showcase, they just really, of course, Matthew is, he's one of the most gracious principals I've ever met. And he's just always so calm and and thoughtful and problem solver and makes things work. And, you know, he talks about how thankful their population is to have athletics this year, for their kids to be able to play their clubs, their cohorted activities. And and just even be able to have their house activities. They used, they divide their middle school kids into houses and now they can do that again. And as, you know, his statement at the end, "With all the challenges of school during a pandemic, the life of the school continues and we remain thankful for the opportunities to serve students and families and and learning and personal growth and development." So he's, he's one of those leaders in schools that just So he's, he's one of those leaders in schools that just takes challenge and turns it into gratitude and turns it into positivity in terms of, and he really works with his staff and his students that way. Some additional highlights there. Um, we've got a couple, uh, individuals who were in the provincial championships for curling, um, Optimus U18. And we had, oh my goodness, a silver, Kaylee Shannon and, um, against a very competitive team, a, uh, sixth place, which is, um, very, that's counts for success, certainly at a provincial level. And that was right with Whitmer. And so that's some highlights. Do you want me to keep going?
We have a question from Andrea.
Oh, so I just wanted to say, I, I did not mention that I took in the Westminster first virtual Christmas concert. And I loved how Angela would read part of Snowman at Night and then the music teacher would run from class to class. And it was really wonderful to see. And I wish I could have seen their outdoor thing, but then I needed to get to Probee. So I love Christmas time, so busy in the schools.
Yeah, yeah, they did an amazing job. They had a lot of fun with that and they felt so affirmed that it was successful and it worked for them. And so that, that was, uh, that was the big thrill for me is how affirmed they were with that.
Bringing that up.
Yep. And so town hall, so town hall, this is just a reminder in the agenda package just for the public because certainly, um, you know, we've got the invitations out, the questions and Leanne's working, um, getting everyone in their rooms and registered and they'll be getting their emails at the end of the week. Right, Leanne, all of the participants with what rooms they'll be in and all the instructions. We have, uh, a practice round with all of our administrator hosts on Friday, um, so that they can all run through that and feel really confident about what they're doing. And I do, it was in the, um, other board meeting package, in the in camera package, there is a, um, in there's an outline for the board of trustees and so, Leanne, I don't know if we can bring that up for, I don't know if it's possible to bring that up. Um, or, or the board members have their packages there. Um, it was on the in camera, but we can cover that now, just in case you have any questions. Cause this is your last time that I'll see you before then, in case you had any questions. Yeah, there we are, Leanne, so scroll up the page before we could, there we are up there. And so this is just a real, I, I take the instructions that I provide to administrators and, and really pare it down so that you sort of know, well, what is it that, that we do? And so there's the link to the town hall site. It'll be front and center on our website, right? So it'll be front and center on websites, you go, you click it. Um, the opening and closing will be, um, streamed on the town hall website. So there's, it'll take you to the town hall website and it's about as easy to navigate as we can make it. I think it's pretty straightforward. And the one thing about it, there's always, always, there's a helpline there that it's big helpline. So whether you're trustee or someone who's saying, like, I'm just not understanding, how do I get to my? Now Garrett, it's in, it's on the right, on the bottom left, right? The helpline, right? So it's obvious whether it's you or a member of the public, don't feel hesitant whatsoever because we've got people on the hotline, right? Ready to answer any calls and help people out in the right direction. And so there's the opening and closing, 6:30 to 6:50. I've put more time in there than it will likely take, right? Because Alison will, will give the, the greeting and the welcome and the purpose. I'll go through the instructions for people, knowing that they're going to forget the instructions after they get into their first room, right? But, but part of the administrators will be to remind them, okay, now you're going to do this, right? And so it's sort of built in as part of the process. So for you, of course, you, there's going to be two rounds of in the room and then thought streaming, because you have two questions as the board. So everyone will go to the first question, the administrators assigned to that room. One will try to facilitate and guide, um, participation and making sure everyone has a chance to share and speak. And then the administrator will give instructions. All right, now you're going to get 15 minutes to go to enter your ideas into thought stream. And that's when our administrators will say, okay, you're going to go back, um, to, to the main town hall site. Leave the room, go to the site. They're going to encourage people, um, to enter the thought stream on their phones. Because when you do it on your phones, you can, they're going to be able to see on their screens, everyone else's ideas coming up through the thought stream. But they can also do it on their computers and just, and, and open up a different browser, right? And so people seem to navigate that quite readily last year. It sounds complicated and yet we really didn't have anyone have any problems with that. It's just sort of intuitive and they were able to do that. Then that thought stream for the first question, and as board members, you'll be able to see, you can go to the main town hall website and you will see all the ideas coming up from students, from parents, from staff and from community members. The thought streams will roll across those four screens that you'll see on the main town hall website. Then it'll stop, there'll be a little warning, all right, it's going to stop and it stops. So that will then, the instructions will be for those people to go to their second room. And in their email, they'll, we'll have, from Leanne, they would have said, okay, for the first question, go to room three. Second one, go to room six. So they'll go to their next room, same process all over again, second question. Then that facility say, okay, go to your second thought stream for the different question. And it'll be the same thing all over again, they enter their ideas. They have a maximum of four entries. Each person has a maximum of four entries into the thought stream. When the second thought stream is done, then it's the closing and Alison will be, um, giving the closing. And, um, and from there, um, of course, our administrators will also, and Alison will, you know, encourage, you know, make sure you fill out the evaluation form, we'd really appreciate that. And then we go, we go from there. And so for board members, um, what we've told administrators is that when they see a board member come into a room, um, you know, don't stop anyone cold in the middle of conversation, but when there's a break, um, because it's the job of the techie helper administrator, um, to make note of when a board member's come into the room, right? And so then when there's a natural break, you'll be introduced, um, as a board member, right? And so board members, the role of board members is sort of, um, as listeners. And so, and then of course, um, you're going to listen, not necessarily comment, guide, influence, that type of thing. Um, you'll listen and if, and if they're wanting you to answer something or debate something, you know, and, and this is my recommendation that you would say, you know, this town hall is for you to express your ideas. It's for us to listen and for you to enter your thoughts into thought stream so that we can look at all of the thoughts of everybody, right? It's, and, and for, um, to get you to express yourselves. It's not, um, necessarily for, um, a debate or for feedback from me as a board member. It's for you to give your ideas. And so, and then when you leave that particular room, you, you could type in, um, I enjoyed hearing your discussion, thank you, right? And then that way you don't have to wait until they stop, you can leave at any time. If you see that little chart, um, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be directive. This is the way the trustees did it last year and, and I don't know, maybe Christine and Tali can say whether it was helpful or not helpful. Um, to try to make sure that all the rooms get visited. Um, each trustee sort of has the four rooms to visit. So you know, you've got, uh, 25 minutes, four rooms, you know, not to say you can't go to more than four, but, but those that you, as a trustee, you try to make sure you went to at least those four rooms, right? And you might want to go to more than those four rooms. Now the ones that are in gray, that's if we need, if, if, uh, Leanne gets more registrations than we have rooms, then we'll be adding those and we'll let you know, right? Right now they're grayed out because we don't have participants to fill those rooms yet, um, right, Leanne? Yeah, but we will let you know if it ends up that there's participants in those rooms. So is there, are you all good with visiting those rooms? Does that make sense? Jenny?
Um, I just was wondering who we have acting as our facilitators for the rooms. Is that division staff?
It, it's our administrators.
Oh, it's our principals?
Yep, and vice principals, right? So principals, vice principals, as well as some central office leaders, some coordinators, directors. Yeah, so it's all, um, people from central office and as well as our school administrators. Any other questions? Craig?
Just, just a concern, um, and these aren't bad questions, but I recollect in our last board meeting, I don't think any of these questions came up. Some of what we thought we should discuss that, uh, as I look at the minutes. Okay.
Maybe, maybe I'll let Christina and Christine respond to this because they were the two board members who were your representatives. Describe the questions and then send them out.
Mental health, wellness. Now there is the bridging of the gap of student learning, inclusion, parent engagement, cultural awareness. So I, I'm just wondering how we actually did come up with those two questions, if they could answer that.
That would be a question for Christine and Christina.
Christina, are you okay?
Yeah, and I can answer and Christine jump in if you want. Um, so the, the, sorry, I'm just trying to find the notes, but, um, the topics that we sent to our small group were enormous. Uh, they were very large topics. And so trying to come up with, um, a question or two questions that covered as many as we could to us, um, was under the umbrella of learning, which is our core work here. Um, because all of the, the topics that were sort of proposed were things that impact students' learning. And we thought that this, these types of questions would allow all of those different stakeholders, students, parents, um, staff, community to bring up those topics within the scope of our actual work, right? Um, and, uh, respectfully, we did vote on these questions at the last meeting to accept them as the questions. If I recall correctly. Oh, we emailed them, sorry. And I, did, did people respond with concerns? I, I don't recall that, sorry, thanks.
I, I did respond with concerns. Um, I had missed that part of the meeting because I'd had to leave early for my kid's performance. And so I went back and watched that part of the meeting and I did find the same thing that Craig did. I didn't hear ever, um, the mention of, let me get the words right. I didn't hear student learning. I heard a lot of, uh, communication, a lot around communications and, and engagement strategies. Um, so I was assuming that must have come from other sources as well. I know we talked about the town hall questions more than once and in more than one venue. But in that meeting, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Go ahead, Kristia.
Perfect, thanks, sorry, that gave me a second to pull up all the information, so thank you. Um, so, uh, Jenny, I saw your email now, thank you. I did see it before, but I just pulled it up again, so thanks for the reminder. Yeah, things have happened. Um, and Christine also did provide a, a long response as well, uh, in our email. Um, and I'm not sure if she wants to address it, but.
It was Christine Light that did the response?
Yeah. I'd have to pull up the email, I can't recall my email in this, in this moment. Hang on, I can pull it up. Um, I'll, I'll add to what Christina said and maybe it's what I wrote in the email. Um, when, when Cheryl, Christina and I, um, came together to create the questions for town hall, um, as I recall, on the top of my head, we spoke about parent communication and add, add if I'm missing, um, inclusion, learning gaps. We were talking a lot about the gaps, um, the gaps in services, gaps in communication. Um, and so when we sat down to create the questions, um, we had those in front of us on a plate. And then we also had in front of us, this is the first year of our board. And so we want to, it's, it's beneficial to get a broad, um, a broad picture as opposed to let's just talk about a parent engagement, let's just talk about inclusion. And, and I think within our conversation, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, in that past board conversation, um, the idea of inclusion, especially during, um, this COVID season would be a tricky one to, to focus in on. And so what we wanted to do was, what we thought would be the best plan would be to come up with a broad question that would invite conversation of all the pieces that were, that were discussed at that board meeting. So, um, and we also wanted to give opportunity for two questions. We don't want, um, we thought, no, we can, we managed the online last year. Um, so we have capacity for that, so there's value in having two. Um, and so to start with a question, in what ways have we successfully supported student learning? It's really good to begin the conversation in a positive note because we want to be productive, right? This is for our strategic, strategic planning. Um, we want to focus on, okay, what are the things that have, have worked? It's been challenging, but what are some positives? And to start the, the evening with that. And then to move on to, um, the negative, if you have a positive and a negative question per se. Moving forward, what can the school division do to strengthen, support a student learning? And we, we want to give space as a board for people to express frustration, for people to express what hasn't worked, absolutely. Um, but we also want it to continue to be a productive conversation within that. And so when we came up with this question, what can the school do to strengthen, support student learning? What we envisioned, um, and it's, it's, it's an assumption that we are walking forward in, is that people would say, well, to support student learning, for example, you could better parent communication. To support student learning, for example, you know, my kid lost how many hours of, of math instruction because they bounced from online to in-person per se? And so we tried to create a question that would catch all of the concerns that were, that were brought forward by the board. So that's, that's where we came forward with that. So no, um, within the conversation, we didn't say student learning per se. At the end of the day, student learning is why we are here. And all those other pieces that we talked about at the prior board meeting, um, before sending Christina, Cheryl and myself to come up with these questions, um, yeah, this is, that's kind of the road to these two questions.
Craig?
Thanks. I, I didn't know, it might've been my fault, I didn't know we were supposed to respond to the email. I just read the email and thought, oh, where did these questions come up? So I just wanted clarification on that. So if I was supposed to respond to the email, sorry, I didn't.
And I think, can I, can I add just something quick, Alison? If there's, it's always good, conversation is always good, right? And so if we're, we're presenting something, um, conversation at board meeting is essential. But it's also okay to not wait three, three weeks to ask the question. So if there is a concern, absolutely have the conversation and, and, and we can, and we can move forward with that together. I think that's really important.
Uh, Christina, you had your hand back up?
Yeah, and I think, um, I would agree that I think it may, uh, be a challenge in like the process about how we got to the questions, it may be part of the confusion or challenge here. So, um, can you remind me, in a non-election year where we don't start in the middle of your year, um, do you start the town hall question development earlier? Cause we met, uh, with Christine and Cheryl in, I think, November or December, so.
It was in December, I believe.
Sorry, I don't remember the timelines of this one, whether, did, I can't remember, Christine and Christine, I can't remember whether that question was scripted for the December board meeting or not. I can't remember that. Cause typically it is, and there's time, yeah, it wasn't, that's why. So yes, yes, typically the question would have been framed, um, either the whole board would have said at a meeting, yeah, that's the question we want. Or if I remember remembering the, the conversation, it was a very lengthy conversation without nearing any sort of consensus in terms of the topic. And that's when the board said, you know, let's just put a, let's just have two trustees sit and, and see if they can make something out of this breadth of, of ideas. And so certainly Christina and Christine, the challenge of how do we make, you know, all the way from inclusion to communication, to engagement, to learning, to gaps, how do we make that work for questions? And so in a, in a regular year, I guess, or in a, in a year where the, the board flows through into, the same board flows through into the fall, they would have confirmed the question in December, right? So this was, was a little, a little bit of a delayed timeline. And, and that's why I think Christine and Christina put the question out via email, right? Because we had already, um, gone past that, that time for that to happen. And, and right after the new year is when we
And, and right after the new year is when we have to, I have to engage Garrett and Jesse to get the website going, I have to engage Leanne in getting the invitations ready and out, and so that, that was sort of the plan for this time. And, and I think the plan was talked about in the board meeting, but again, that was, seemed like a long time ago, been so busy, I can't recall, but yeah. So Christine?
And I do know in previous years, it has been considerably back further, because I know sitting on Community Engagement Committee, the question usually came to Community Engagement already done and approved by the board. So I do think that probably with it being the election year, that it was a much shorter time, and I think going into next year, that'll look different with us having more time. So Christine, did you have something quick to add?
I do, and, and I think even going into next year, I know when we were given a month to come up with Town Hall questions, right? And so my, my recollection of the last board meeting is people didn't have questions, per se, but ideas. And so now, having gone through it this year, yes, we can start the, the conversation about the questions earlier, but I think after going through this process, going through our first board retreat, and then we'll have a year under us, and so we'll have more of a grounded idea of where we want to focus the next Town Hall. This is a, this is a general to give a broader view. And so I think even just strength as a, as a body of trustees will, will be better set to move forward with perhaps more specific intention next year.
Thank you. Anything else for Town Hall, or are you good sure? Perfect. So I look forward to doing Town Hall with our parents and community members, and students, and teachers. Thank you. Moving on to COVID highlights.
And just as a matter of fact, if you have any questions at all, don't hesitate to, to click that help, to phone that helpline, right? It's a good helpline, for sure. All right, so COVID highlights, if we've got our, I believe you've got hard copies as well, trustees, as, so I'll, I'll go through that. And as is always the case following the board meeting, Garrett, our Communications Officer, will take information from this full guide, that you've got hard copies of, and because there's copyrighted information that we can't just sort of put the whole thing on our website, so he'll draw information from here, put it into the template that we put on our website monthly, all right? And so that's what happens with this information. And so if we could scroll to the factors to consider, there are first blue and pink chart. So currently, I mean, what's the highlight there? And again, thank you to Christina, Christina Fair, who, Morag's assistant, who puts this, much of this information in, as well as when we get, of course, thank you to Human Resources, Mike and Morag, and then, you know, I'll fill in some of the other information. So it's sort of a collaborative effort. So currently, there are 1,191 hospitalizations, 107 in ICU, positivity rate of 36.7. So certainly, what can be said is the current presentation of COVID is higher than it's been in the past. And so since testing and identification of COVID-19 has moved to higher-risk populations, we have not received the same level of support to identify COVID-19 in our schools. And so we've talked about that before, and, you know, we've explained that to parents, we've talked about it at school council, the Division School Council meeting, where, you know, last year and beginning of this year, we got used to where Alberta Health Services was providing us with information, right? In terms of positive cases, they're just simply too overwhelmed and focusing their efforts on high-risk populations. If we take a look at other guidelines, you could scroll to page three, Leanne, yeah, right there, oh, there's really nothing new with other, other guidelines. I've put in sort of a summary there of, you know, there are some specific guidelines for spectators, if a school division applies the R E P, the restrictions can be enhanced to suit local context. So, and that's where the whole, and term R E P does get confusing, because every school that, if you look at medicine, has school divisions' R E P or R E P, it'll say, medicine has school division R E P, or Lethbridge School Division R E P, because certainly the provincial R E P allows you to add more restrictions. In fact, if you go to businesses, they don't all have the same R E P. That's how complex it gets. So you can go to Boston Pizza, and the way they apply R E P is that you need to have proof of vaccination, period. You go to a different business, you can have proof of vaccination, or you can have the, a rapid test within the last 72 hours. At some facilities, they'll have, so the way that even businesses apply the R E P is contextual. In other words, it's not the same application across businesses, it's not the same application across school divisions. And so the one that is the Lethbridge School Division R E P, that's up on our website, has the base template, and, and it's, and that's right from the, that's the provincial requirements of what's required in an R E P, that's all there. And then the next, the E and F, I think it is, and G, is where schools will put in anything that's specific to a context or a sport, right? Or where they're at with spectators. And so the one that's up on our website can apply to all the way from the two parents, and it, and they, it can apply all the way to full stadium, right? Using an R E P. That's the flexibility of it. So the division has not restricted so many participants in the R E P. The division has left the R E P and things that are specific to schools and sports and indoor and outdoor to the school decision-making. If you look at that template, it's wide open. So if people are saying, well, just use the provincial one, that's what's on our website, right? And how that's applied, and how that's decided to be applied, becomes a school-site-based decision. And so as I've mentioned to the board, you know, is, are we supporting school-site-based decision-making with the voluntary activity of extracurricular and co-curricular activities? In that R E P that we have, that gives them that judgment in terms of what it is that they're feeling they're ready for, for the application of an R E P. And, and that's, and if you read it and look at it, that's the way it's scripted and written for Lethbridge School Division. And so if we keep scrolling and go to page four, Leanne, we've got, I think this sort of gives you a good indication of where we're at, right? And so, and I know that lots of people, you know, would like to, if we look at the chart, 1,305 as of January 21st in Lethbridge, right? And so the highest that we've ever had before that was 451 at the end of September last year. And so certainly, you know, we're, we're in a position that's somewhat unprecedented. I think that, you know, when Mike talks about absenteeism and things like that, we're hopeful that maybe we're, we're getting to have a plateau, or that we're going to start to see some shifts. I think that we're seeing other provinces that has happened. And so, I mean, it's, it's not too despair, certainly, but we certainly, that number will, is an indicator of what our schools are experiencing, because certainly our schools would have a percentage of that. Craig?
Yeah, I'm just, and I know that the number they report, it's quite higher than when we first started with COVID back in 2020. However, considering that in Lethbridge alone, our, our average, if you average north, south, and west side, 12 and up, it's probably close to 89% vaccinated with two doses. And now they've got, a lot of have three doses. So my question is, back in the day, if, in 2021 or 20, when we went back to school, if someone caught COVID and was not vaccinated, they would be out of work, out of the school for a long time. What's, like, when someone declares that they're absent, the absentee rate, how long a date, like, is it one day, two days, three days? I'm just, I'm just, because it, it seems like with Omicron, if you're vaccinated and you do get sick, I know that some people, it's two days, and then they're feeling good. And I know that the government has said five days, but they also said some people can go back to work. I mean, in some provinces, that they're saying go back. But I'm just, just wondering how, like, it's, it's five days average? I've talked to people that have had it, and it's two days, and some have seven, but with vaccinated people, it's a lot shorter than unvaccinated, right?
It, it can be, and, but, so I couldn't, like, I don't have that data, so I couldn't tell you, I certainly don't have it on, on my fingertips. Anecdotally, I can say that, yeah, you know, the guidance is five days if you're fully vaccinated. I've talked to some people that, you know, have been like, on day three, I could come back, and I've talked to some people who on day eight, they're still not feeling well. And that's the, that's the tricky part, is the symptoms, and when do the symptoms go away? So yeah, we, there's been lots of questions about that sort of thing, but I couldn't tell you an average, Craig, I wouldn't be able to give you that info.
But the average is five, right? That's what the government says?
It's not, it's not an average. It's a, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
So even if you feel good after three days, you can't come back. So AHS, you have to stay home, quarantine five days. If you still feel ill, you still have to quarantine, and that's when it gets longer, but it's a standard required minimum five days, and that's for double vaccinated. For people unvaccinated, it's the 10-day quarantine.
Good question, because certainly the context does look different. And of course, we were just beginning with the, to see what it will look like for percentages for our under 12, right? I know that, I heard on the news that we're one of the lowest provinces for vaccination rates for under 12, but we're, we're getting there. Mike?
I've actually added the vaccination rates into this document. So they're in there, that was feedback that we got from one of our school councils, that's one of the things we should consider. So we don't have to go through it now, but it's at the end, under other factors to consider. And so we've got it break, broken down between, right now, for two doses, five to 11, and 12 to 19, because that covers our, our school age. So yeah, that's something we should be, be talking. It's not some, we've always, it's always something we looked at, but it really should be in the document, and let's keep updating it, right?
Because it is relative, for sure. Like, in terms of, you know, as we move forward, what, what that, what that looks like, for sure.
And I think we may even want to put one-dose numbers for five to elevens, because depending on when they're eligible, I think that's probably data. If the board says, yeah, we want some of that data in there, then it's fairly easy to put it in there. It takes like five minutes.
And I know that if you're old like me, and I read the Lethbridge Herald, every Saturday, they have an update on the vaccination rate across Southern Alberta. So with one vaccination, 12 and up, double vaccinated, so yeah, thanks.
Great, and actually, we, we could put in here, too, there's an interactive map on the webs, on the Alberta website, right? Where you just can click, and it gives you the different age groups and the vaccination rates for either a single or double. So the one week, if we go to page five, the one-week daily trend is there. The four-week daily case trend is also there. This looks like a little bit of a roller coaster ride, but, I mean, I'm sure, you know, I can't remember best fit plot line, if I remember mathematics. We'll, we'll, maybe another week, and we'll see where that, where that falls out. Page six, we've got our active cases in Lethbridge, as you can see, of course, it's very high. Not anything's been the same throughout COVID, and that's, you know, as Craig's pointed out, things look different now, they'll look different a month from now, they'll look, and so certainly, all we can do is, you know, take a look at trends, take a look at what's happening, take a look at absences, take a look at how it's impacting our school communities and our children, with the goal, of course, of keeping our children and staff safe, as always the number-one lens as we look at things. Are there known COVID-19 diagnoses in schools? Well, this whole section now, of course, is, they're not doing that anymore. And so certainly, I mean, we, we know that we've got, you know, staff who will say they are positive, we've got parents who will say, my kids are positive. And, and so really, it's more of a social self-monitoring now, really is what I would call it, right? It's social self-monitoring. So certainly, you know, when staff say they're positive, they're positive. And, and, you know, they, they have that mandatory five, or 10, or longer, if they're not, if they're still symptomatic, it has to be longer and that type of thing. And so all that contract tracing, that whole section of factors, of course, doesn't apply right now, because that's not happening with Alberta Health Services. Page seven, has our insurer given any specific guidelines for position of potential liability? So we did get a memo, January 24th, a new memo, that they encourage Lethbridge School Division to require universal indoor masking for students in the current insurance policy term, as per the late, I should say latest, that's a typo, Health Canada, HHS, and Canadian Medical Association guidance. And so we have had a memo from the insurance to say, you know, we should have, at least for this term of insurance, or this year, until things change, you should have the universal masking requirements, which is what we're doing. And that's what was recommended, strongly recommended, actually, in the, in the guide. And so that, that insurance piece from our insurer sort of reinforces, I guess, the fact that, you know, for us to not go with those recommendations, in other words, it was in our provincial guide, and now by our insurer, we'd have to have a pretty laudable reason to say we didn't do it because, right? And we'd have to have a good reason why we didn't follow recommendations from the provincial guidance, as well as from our insurer. Student absenteeism rate, so we've got the apps, well, Thursday, there was 900, Friday, 1,200. Not all these absences are connected to illness or COVID, like, it gets very complicated, because we don't know for sure. And some, some families are keeping their kids home because they're saying, whoa, I don't, like, I know Sally and Johnny, and Bobby and Sue, and all of these kids that are at school have, you know, I know from their parents, I'm keeping my, so it's, it's complicated in terms of actually how many are COVIDed. Jenny?
Sorry, back to just what you were reading about the, from the insurance, where it's the latest Health Canada, HHS, and Canadian Medical Association guidance. Does that guidance provide an age for the masking? Is it, is it for, is that the grade four and up in those guidances?
It's in K, it's K to 12.
The K to 12, okay.
Yeah. That's my understanding, Christine, you're the insurer?
Yeah.
And then I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk about staff, if I could, Mike, and absenteeism.
Yeah, and so what's in the document, I'll give you a little more detailed of a breakdown. I know you're aware of some of that, but I think it's also important to mention some of these in, in our, in our public meetings, some of the statistics. I know we've been keeping you up to date. So in terms of overall absences, the week of January 10th to 14th, we had about 10.37% of our staff away due to a whole variety of reasons, obviously COVID and illness being a large driver of that. This past week, so the 17th to 21st, we had 12.43% of our staff away. And that, sorry, when I say that, that's on an average day, I should have been a little more clear on that, so I'm talking about on an average day. This week, on Monday, we were 12.86% of our staff absent, and then today, we were 13.59% with the caveat, but that number might change today, because there could be people who partway through the day, the status collected in the morning, so those numbers do change a little bit, but that gives you a pretty good picture. Terms of unfilled absences for teachers, the week of the 10th to 14th, on an average day, we could not fill, we could not find a replacement for about 2.54% of our teacher absences. Last week, on an average day, that went up to 10.85%. Today, it was 4.04%, and on Monday, it was 7.69%. Terms of non-teaching positions, the week of the 10th to the 14th, we had about 33.94% of our non-teaching positions that we couldn't find a replacement for. Last week, it was 44.18%. Monday, it was 42.03%, and today, it was 37.14%, with the caveat, that number might have changed. You know, we've said a number of times, and the board has been very appreciative of the work that's being done to keep schools operational, so thank you for that. And I think it's important to state, this is certainly a board that's been very engaged with that, and, and understands what's going on in schools, and is paying close attention to that. And certainly, we appreciate that, and it's, it's felt, and it's known, and, and so wanted to say thank you on behalf of our staff for your commitment and caring to that. And if there's any questions, I'll answer them, otherwise, I think I'm done.
Jenny, go ahead.
I just received a few emails and concerns from parents, and somebody even was sending me photos of a child who was on oxygen with a paramedic and was injured in a sporting incident, basketball, I think, something with a kneecap. But there was concerns from that, from, I don't know if it was that child's parents, or parents who were there, or just parents in general, that a child was injured and needing medical care, and parents weren't able to access their child. And so I'm not I'm not sure how to respond to parents that are concerned about accessing injured children or the potential that children can be injured in sports. And that there's a barrier between parents and those kids.
I mean, that's, that's, and, and I'm and I, if I'm remembering correctly, that would have been a high school age student. And, and so whether that student's in Edmonton at a tournament or Calgary at a tournament or in their homeschool or in an out of city place. Um, I, I, I think that, and that is here. Yeah, yeah. And, and so, yeah, I understand that. I'm just talking about circumstance, right? So if an athlete is injured, and I, and I coached for a lot of years, Jenny, right? And so if uh and I know that I talked to the coaches. So if an athlete is injured, typically the coach, coaching team um will facilitate, you know, whether or not an ambulance is called, securing that student using first aid. Um, I don't know if it's common for a parent to go down at a high school level on the gymnasium floor, perhaps it is. But certainly in terms of access to the child, um I would hope that one of the first calls is to a parent, whether they're in Edmonton or whether they're in Lethbridge or whether they're in in a different city. And so certainly, you know, we want to give absolute due care and attention to an injured person and parents absolutely um are worried when their son or daughter is injured, absolutely, right? And whether it's in a sport, whether it's on a stairwell at school or whether it's whether they're in a, in a field trip with school or wherever they may be, we always have protocols in place for injured students and whether that be at a sporting event or whether that be on stage at a dramatic event, or whether that be on a field trip, or whether that be at an out of town location. And so certainly our number one priority is making sure is there immediate contact? Is that student kept safe with first aid? And um is, are, are the proper protocols followed to make sure that there's safety provided to that student and communication to the parent? And I'm thinking that happened, I might be wrong though.
I think it's just something for us to be aware of and a factor that maybe we haven't given enough attention to. Um, to think about under what circumstances a parent maybe should have access to their child and what steps we're taking to ensure that we have permission to be providing medical care. Um, if we have consent to be without the parents' presence.
Oh my goodness, I would hope so, that all of our teams have those forms filled out because again, what if they're in Edmonton or if they're on a field trip or if they're out of town or if they're, um because absolutely I would hope that every single and, and we've got permission clicks, we've got all kinds of forms to ensure that um all extracurricular curricular activities are managed properly with respect to health services, right? And, and attendance to an injured student.
But we can just reassure, reassure parents of the protocols and process for.
Right. And, and parents should have received, I'm sure if they're a parent of a sporting child, they must have received at some point a team package um that they would have signed and provided, for example, healthcare numbers and you know, they would have provided information to ensure access to um medical attention.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions? Cheryl, were you finishing on?
Let's see, what else have we got left? So uh page uh nine, go to page nine. Oh, as, as Mike, probably the new thing there is under uh other, um other factors to consider is the vaccination rates there, right? And so what we can do next uh next month is make sure we clarify that it would be sort of the one or two dose percentages, right? Just so that is clear, whether those are the one or two dose. And you know, as Craig mentioned, we're, we're, we're doing well in Lethbridge for our, for our youth numbers, twelve to nineteen. We're, we're certainly, I would say, higher than provincial average or certainly higher than a lot of areas surrounding us and our little ones. Um, not they're not that they're little, our younger students, five to eleven. Um, you know, we'll have to see what that looks like in terms of um how that rolls out over the next month, because certainly not all of them have had that opportunity for the time span to pass. Um, but I think that, you know, at this point, we are still very cautious about what those numbers are looking like. And I think those would be the highlights for the board, um unless you've got any questions for myself or Mike or Morik or Christine?
I'm not seeing any more questions. So I think you're good to move on to the next item.
Okay. Now, I, I just wanted to point out as well, and sorry, this is, I know it's a late, a little bit of a detour. And Leanne, I should have said this ahead, I can keep going on a different topic if, um I wouldn't mind um just pointing out to the trustees, because I know you've been getting some questions, what the COVID safety measures are in our reentry plan and where you find those. And so Leanne, I know you had it up once before the reentry plan, if that's possible. As part of our quick highlights here, and I won't read them to you or go through them with you, but just, just so if you get some, because certainly people are curious. What are you doing about, like your staff and your parents or here's what are you doing about um the different safety pieces? And so once we get there on page nine, there we are, reentry plan updated, yep, right there. Yep. And then perfect. So on, on page nine, you'll see, and I'll just speak to it and then, and then Leanne will scroll to it. We've got our environmental measures. And so some of the things that were updated in this last piece, so we're looking for page nine. That includes sort of our, our HVAC systems. And so that HVAC system is maintained in accordance with manufacturer operational guidelines. That's been there from the get go. And I have to say, we're very I want to highlight how lucky and fortunate we are that we actually have a specialized HVAC trained person in our school division who checks our HVAC systems on a regular basis, their filters are changed on a regular basis and all that. There's also a link that we added, we had our uh director of uh facilities write a summary of, of our ventilation system and the due care and attention um that our ventilation system gets. And I'm going to turn it to Christine if you had any comments besides just me highlighting that it's there.
The, the one thing I do want to highlight in there, that when they talk about maintaining to manufacturer specifications and we talk about, there's lots of discussion about different filters. If you put the wrong size filter in for your system, you're actually doing worse for your schools. Um, and so you have to make sure of the right size uh filters and the right type of filters. We buy the highest quality that we can to put into our systems. And um, and, and then we always make sure we're maintaining and changing them out and that sort of thing. And then, uh, and I think we had the conversation before about portable ha, uh portable filters that they're putting in the portable HEPS. They put in, uh suggested to put in classrooms. Those actually can harm the balancing of your system because what they do is they create negative pressure and they actually can cause CO2 problems and cause your actual systems not to run the way they're intended. And then because they pull air, they're actually pulling bad air by you. So it's, they're really not recommended. There's a lot of hype out there. Um, a lot of, of companies take, trying to take advantage of, of uh, of some of this to get people to spend a lot of money. And so we do make sure we're meeting all the requirements we're, or have to under law. And so that's good. Um, talking about just even the cleaning that's up, it's up there. I do, uh, something that maybe we're not aware of, but when we first entered COVID, we created a huge checklist of processes and documents that the schools all have. Each school has a, a, we call a safety committee of four people. They go through on a routine basis to make sure every, they have what they call a COVID walk around checklist. They go around the school to make sure our hand centers being updated and is, are there masks available? Are the daily cleanings being done their way they're supposed to? And they do those checks and make sure that they've got everything they need in their schools and those things are going on. And our caretakers have been absolutely amazing. And they do extra sanitation and cleaning and wipe down of high, high touch surfaces and those extra cleans in the washrooms. And yeah, we, we do quite a bit. We've had, um, again, speaking to safety. We've had with over COVID, um, a number of reviews by uh provincial occupational and safety have come out because of initiatives, initiatives by the government to check our safety protocols in our schools. Um, in twenty twenty and then in twenty twenty one, we've had them. And they've always been satisfied with what's gone on in the schools because the schools are very diligent at following the protocols. We, I really appreciate everything they do because um they do go to a lot of effort.
Uh, just on our, as we were talking about, Victoria Park might get an upgrade, they're hoping and it'll be better in uh circulation. Right now on some of the older schools, is our HVAC up to the provincial standard or more than the provincial standard, even though they're older?
Well, most of our schools are up to provincial, obviously up to provincial standards. We do have airflow in, in our old schools. Is it as good as the, the newer ones? No, I mean, the best, but it's, it's not, it's not considered harmful. The only problem is in the heat.
Thanks.
Okay, so just to quickly point out again, if we scroll, keep scrolling, Leanne, we've got the uh, we'll go past screening and illness. Uh, let's go past management of symptomatic individuals. Go past that, keep going. And that, so stop there. So of course, right from the beginning, as Christine says, we've been really in our, our schools, really vigilant on the whole um uh hand sanitization, the washing, the respiratory etiquette. All of that is, is really emphasized in schools and reinforced and, and followed. And so keep going, Leanne. So we've got the, and also the COVID symptom check. Um, and always using the most up to dated one in school actions, keep going, Leanne. That's just what happens if someone's sick. Transportation, I've already mentioned, uh CMOH order thirty four twenty twenty one. Um, cell phone follows, right? And so certainly, you know, if parents have questions about transportation, we know that that's happening. Visitors to school and managing visitor contacts. Um, as you know, we've got the cameras, the bells. Um, and uh, you know, certainly visitors, um volunteers have to follow the um regulation for volunteers. Parents coming into the school, they can come into the school if they're not in contact with students, like if they need to drop something off um at an office or if they need to have a meeting with a teacher or a principal or whatever, there's certainly um nothing that's stopping that from happening. I know that, you know, there's been a lot of comments about how secure they feel um in their schools with um having secured doors and, and our, you know, we did solve the issue of, of um our um assistance, admin assistance in our schools having to keep getting up out of their desk by having the buzzers and being able to open the door. And so you know, we're getting there. I know it's, it's a different context for people. Um, for now, it's, it's really part of the safety strategy of, of managing visitor contacts. And the other things, of course, we've got the large group gatherings, masks, we've talked about that certainly. Uh, the physical distancing and the cohorting. And of course, that looks different, elementary, middle, high school, because elementary is in natural, more natural cohorts. I'm not to say they're perfect little cohorts, because sometimes there is some um mixing that happens and they can mix up to fifty students, middle schools, high schools. Now that we've added in our co-curricular, extracurricular, that of course adds in more cohorts um at that level. But again, vaccination rates do look different at that level and and certainly, um, you know, the schools being able to um manage those at this time looks a little bit different. And so those are a lot of you know, that a lot of thought has certainly and a lot of work by our schools to try to make sure that their schools are safe. And so any questions from trustees? And the other ones are fairly quick, more information items. So the multicultural calendar. Um, you know, it's, you, sometimes you get these little hidden gems. Um, because you know, until Chris, Christina put forward the motion that was in November, I believe, um regarding, you know, multi-faith um calendar on the division website. Then I started to sort of become, develop an awareness. And of course, Morik helps me to develop the awareness and and uh so, and then find out that actually, um one of our Jordan Hoffa, who's our uh works with our ESL families, has been doing a monthly ESL can, calendar and distributing it among schools for a while. And so now we just sort of need to, I just wanted to share that with the board that that's happening, but that's still not to where we want to get with respect to that broad public piece of what does that look like in the awareness piece. And so just wanted to let you know that that piece is happening. It's been handed over to, to Morik and her multicultural anti-racism committee to talk about what are some, what are some strategies? And then of course, working with them and what does that look like on our website? And what does that look like to actually make a difference? Because rather than it just be, oh, that's nice, there's a document, that group will be talking about, well, and how does that document make a difference, right? And so um unless there's questions, we'll keep going. I just know that Morik's working on that with her committee. Questions? Okay. And then
High scholarship.
High scholarship, we already talked about that, that's there for your information. And I know Christine talked about that in her report. And the calendar of events are there unless there's anything missing or any questions about those dates.
Just if I can add one for January thirty first is uh board trustee ASBA orientation. And that was sent out to everybody, but that can be added to the calendar, January thirty first. ASBA, yep, board or trustee orientation. Craig and then Christine.
Community conversation can be added to the tenth, Allison.
Oh, yes.
Alright.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna say.
Okay, perfect. Christina, oh, everybody's got the same mind. Thank you. Perfect. You're good, Cheryl?
All done.
Perfect. So moving on to the ATA uh local council, and that's Christine Light with a uh oral report.
Yes, it was a fifteen minute meeting. It was very brief. Um, so not really any information that was uh brought forward. But I, I will share that our teachers uh came into this term cautious and appreh- apprehensive, um and committed to caring for our kids. And so um, of course, I, I, I passed on our gratitude on behalf of the board um for their hard work and their dedication. So that's just where our teachers are at. Um, and that was that meeting. Are there any questions?
Not seeing any questions. Would you like to move on to division school council?
Sure, I attached the minutes. Um, it was also a brief uh meeting, information wise, we weren't able um to get the many reports really beyond superintendent and trustee and we all have that information. Um, there was some good conversation um that was had. So that's why I included the minutes. There was quite a few um questions that were asked. Uh, some just clarifying about coding, clarifying about masking. Um, conversations going back and forth about, you know, why, why do community parameters? Why are community parameters different than in-school parameters and et cetera? And um, so the questions and the answers are, are in the link if you, if you want to see specifics. But after the meeting, I just, I just thought, you know, it was really exemplified this meeting. Just the beauty and challenge of a diverse community. There were some very uh different viewpoints presented. Um, and I was just proud of our community. It was spoken with respect. Um, people were hearing the other side and there was good conversation. So I really did appreciate division school council. And so one story, I'm just trying to pull it up here. But I just wanted to share, Tish is one of our moms. And she's fantastic. And she has kids in um Mike Mountain Horse and uh GS Lakey. And so she was just telling us about how her daughter sewed a hundred and twenty stockings um for the homeless in Lethbridge just prior to, to Christmas. And what was really cool was how schools stepped out to help her daughter. So GS Lakey did a glove drive and collected over a hundred pairs of mitts for the stockings. And Shinok High School collected socks and Nicholas Sharon's first graders made homemade cards for the stockings. And um Tish was sharing that as her daughter was delivering the stockings. Uh, one gentleman that she gave a stocking to was just really moved that a student made him a card. Um, and that he was cared for. So just a really beautiful picture of how our community is coming together and um our students are impacting the world and our staff are encouraging our students. And that's what I have for you from DSC.
Thank you, Christine. Do, does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy advisory committee. Craig?
Hi. In our last meeting, uh, we reviewed the policies that we voted on. The ones that we did for the first time, three oh three point one administrative appointments, you can read everything that we've changed. It's gone out to all the stakeholders to review it and it'll come back in February for agreement. Four hundred point one point one, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression. It was the view of the committee to have it in the in-camera portion of our gen- It was the view of the committee to have it in the in-camera portion of our January twenty-fifth board meeting, but we changed that. What will happen, I think, is when Positive Spaces has reviewed it, that will come back to us in February. We will go through the policy as, with all the state, with the, with the committee. And then it will be sent out to all the stakeholders to review it. And at that time, we will also bring it back to the board to review it so that we can put our input in before we vote on it in March. So I think that's how it's going to work is that we'll wait for positive changes to review it, Positive Spaces, sorry. And then we'll discuss it in February, then it'll go back out to everybody to discuss. And we thought that that would be a good, Alison and I thought it would be a good time to bring it to the board just to discuss it, not to vote on it, but just to give some feedback back to the committee in March for the March meeting. And then it's just leaves of absences, just look at that and that will be discussed on February ninth. So.
Are there any questions for Craig? Seeing none, we'll move on to the ATA summit. And this is, number of us trustees participated virtually in this event. And definitely thank you to the ATA for hosting that and providing us with some more information. Is there any highlights somebody would, any of the trustees would like to share? Craig?
Oh, well, I, I have to say, I was a little disappointed in ASBA's response to that summit. The goal for trustees is to learn as much information as possible with, with everybody. And so we're, for those that aren't familiar with the ATA and had a, it was a good meeting. A little dry in some spots, but it had some good points that we can use when we think about collective bargaining, curriculum, some other stuff, professional discipline, I guess that's what you'd call it. And so I think it was valuable for trustees just to hear what the ATA thinks about certain things. And, and definitely you want to be as educated as possible. So I enjoyed it and I was a former teacher, so.
Thank you. Yes, it definitely was informative. Andrea, you have a couple of comments?
I enjoyed the indigenous education part of it. And I, the thing that rang for me was nothing about us without us. And I thought that was something to take to heart.
Thank you. So the next agenda item is the economic development Lethbridge. So during that meeting, I've shared the information in the report. Just lots of great work going on there in regards to the physicians and mental health supports in our community, as well as I had the opportunity to share about the ICE scholarship awards, as well as the town hall. And received a couple of participants for both. So it's great to have, have us there to just be sharing and having discussions. Any questions for that? Moving on is ASBA Zone Six, so the information is all there. So just if you are talking to anybody in the public that the curriculum feedback loop is closing in February. There's no exact date and they weren't able to provide us with that. And then the other piece is that there's an online feedback session for curriculum on Tuesday, February eighth, seven fifteen to eight fifteen. It's open to the public to register for that. And then of course, the honoring spirit Indigenous Student Awards twenty twenty-two. The nomination deadline is February first. And that's a great opportunity for our division, for teacher, for trustee, anybody can make a nomination for that. So if you're unfamiliar with the awards, please go and take a look at that link. And if you think of any participants or students in our division, and it does reach quite a range, I think it starts at grade three? Kindergarten. Okay, I know for sure it goes down to at least grade three and could go lower and then obviously up to grade twelve. So there's lots of opportunities for those nominations. So if you think of any students as trustees, you do have the ability to make those nominations. So any questions for the ASBA Zone Six report? Seeing none, I'll move on to the nine point seven is the Wellness Committee Report. Andrea?
So thank you so much for, to Morag for getting Jenny and I up to speed and encouraging us. And, and she told us everybody was lovely and indeed they were. So I was very nervous. So Jenny and Andrea attended our first Wellness Committee meeting with the support of Morag. We received the terms of ref, oh, sorry, we reviewed the terms of reference, noting the addition of a trustee and the taking out of the listed policies concerning wellness, which we can reference as we need them. We were so lucky, as Morag said, it was like having Lady Diana and Prince Charles in the same room. Because we got Dr. Vivian Satorp, oh, and I spelled her name wrong in this report, but do not tell her. Who is AHS's lead medical officer of health for the South Zone and Pamela Hodgkinson, Director at Alberta Health Services. And they gave a COVID update. It was noted that there has been increased hospitalization among children during this fifth wave, more so than they saw in any other wave. And I think that's so important to hear. And that also some of these effects have been long lasting, like they're not, they're not simple things. And I, I think that's really important as we make decisions for children. The high rate of transmission has led to this and people of all ages have been admitted to hospital during this time, including new mums and their newborns who have been transferred to Calgary. Sixty-three people in Lethbridge, that would have been yesterday of all ages, were currently in hospital. Sadly, there have been deaths in stillborn babies. That was really hard to hear. The uptake of vaccines for the young in our region has not been as high as they would like to see. So that's not speaking to Lethbridge because ours are looking really impressive. But the low uptake among all ages in the surrounding area of Lethbridge really affects Lethbridge. And it's like twenty to thirty percent. They are continuing to encourage people through the media and offer clinics at the exhibition grounds. They find those, those blitz, things go well. School clinics and other divisions have not had great uptake. It is important to remember that other vaccines need to be happening to prevent other illnesses like measles, for example. Though while we're working on one, we can't let the ball drop on another. They've been offering catch-up clinics for those at the exhibition. And they would also welcome any input that we have that would help with vaccine hesitancy if we have some ideas. I think some of their advertisements are really, really good that they have. Mike Nightingale gave an excellent presentation on the wellness vision that he and Rhonda Oss and their HR team have been working on. It looks to take action to positively form a partnership between staff members and the division in building wellness. It will look at our foundation of wellness, so what we already have in place that promotes wellness, our culture of wellness that is safe and caring and personalization of wellness. What can an individual do towards wellness and how might we help individuals on their personal journey? I hope I caught that. Okay, while I was reading as fast as I could and thank you for that. Because I think when staff feel that they're in a positive relationship, it, everybody benefits. Deanna Presley Roberts is our Making Connections Coordinator. And she talked about the wonderful response to the Amazing Race that was put on for staff in the fall. QR codes were scanned by a hundred and seventy-seven participants. And in many cases, entire families or staff groups raced through the challenges, meaning that the participation was even higher. Staff feedback indicated that they would love to see another amazing race. Jazzercise, January was put on hold due to having large groups dancing in closed spaces. Moving forward will be the Bell Let's Talk, Pink Shirt Day and a Kindness Tree in the same vein as the Wishing Tree. And having taken part in one Division One book, it was wonderful as children put their wishes. So this, this time they can put things about kindness on the tree. There will be further activities in March, April and June. Kathy Mandell, our Division Counseling Coordinator, reported on the many community agencies that help our division provide wraparound supports for our students such as Lethbridge Family Services. She also sits on the Collaborative Community Safety Team, the Domestic Violence Action Team, the Community Substance Abuse Awareness Resource Team and the Sexual Violence Action Committee. So wow, she is everywhere for us and I'm thankful for that. Courtney Epp of Comprehensive School Health, AHS, is happy to be joining our Division Wellness Committee. And she looks forward to sharing Health Champ's ideas with Morag. And some of these AHS people are, are happy they had been put out doing different things, like for example, COVID testing. So they are happy to be getting back to their portfolios. I attended the Healthy Lethbridge Committee Meeting and shared news of some of the wonderful programs they report on, like the U of L Program Building Brains Together for Young Children. Morag and Andrea and Jenny will talk about how we helped to get the word out about programs that are appropriate for our students and their families. And I was excited about this. So of note for you runners, the Moonlight Run will return this year to our city. So that was exciting. That seems like a step in the right direction. And yes, I'm just hoping that more good things will happen.
Excellent. Are there any questions for Andrea? Seeing none, we'll move on to Jenny with her Community Engagement Report, Committee Report.
Thank you. We met on January thirteenth and we had some representatives there from DSC, as well as Christine, myself, Cheryl, Garrett. And, sorry, we had both Christine. Christine Lee and Light. So we went through our terms of reference. And it was noted that there was a little bit of a discrepancy because when the board approved the minutes in September twenty eighth, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, either they approved the wrong minutes or the wrong minutes were attached. And so we just made, we acknowledged that, recognized that and that those minutes were missing some of what has, what is current in the minutes. But we voted on those minutes now and so that seems rectified at this point. But if you notice a discrepancy there, that's what happened. We had the presentation of the communication plan. And with that, it was, it was a, it's a, it's a very well put together document. And with that, the idea was brought forth that a summary page could be created so that it's a little bit more accessible at a glance. And so Garrett and his team are, are producing that, kind of a review format type thing. The public engagement website was updated to include a contact us tab. There had been a request for a centralized place where the emails of everyone in this room could be found. Most of us in this room could be found, the exec team and the trustees. And so that is now right, readily accessible to people looking for that on the, on the division website. And ICE Scholarship was addressed, that's been addressed already, so I won't go through that. And our next meeting was set for Thursday, February seventeenth at six o'clock. Also, as I mentioned previously in this meeting, a discussion arose of whether we call ourselves public engagement or community engagement. And the confusion there is that the website and the terms of reference, and sometimes what we refer to as committee, those two terms are used, kind of, both of them are used really. So really, it was just asked that I come back to the board and find out which name we want to adopt officially and, and just maybe adjust to just the one name instead of intermittently using both of those. So I'm happy to ask that of the board now or to table it, as was suggested by Christine Light for another meeting. Thoughts on that? Community?
Community.
And, sorry.
Christine Light, go ahead.
Yeah, and the conversation wasn't necessarily just changing the committee itself, but the website, right Jenny? That's my recollection.
I think you're right.
It's whether, do we keep, yeah, do we keep the website as public or do we change public, the website to community?
Have it consistent, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause the website right now is public engagement, right?
It is, and I always call it community.
Right.
Yeah.
We're either changing the name of the committee or changing the name of the website, but we would like them to match if.
And I think that we also have, we also have community conversations, so.
Sorry?
We also have community conversations.
Yeah, that was, the request was also made that our, that our board in our highlights at our, at our school council meetings, that we also again include in highlights this month, community conversations again. And maybe ongoing, we should include that just to get the word out of where it is and when it is, because that changes all the time. That might be a good thing for us to be just constantly updating our schools with is where it is and when it is. So, but back to the name, was that a consensus on committee, do you, community, do you want me to put forth a motion?
I think we're good with community. Yep.
We're good.
That it would be community peace. Yep.
It's official folks. All right. And that was our meeting. Unless you have anything to add to that, Christine?
No, that was great. Thanks Jenny.
Any questions for Jenny? Seeing none, we're at the end of our meeting. I do need, we will, there's nothing else, right? Okay, perfect. And so if we can go into camera, somebody can make a motion to do that, Craig?
I moved, we moved into in-camera.
Okay, and those in favor? And that's carried.